Good morning, members of council. This meeting is now resumed. Members of council, we will not review and confirm the order paper. There are nine items left on the agenda, including by-member motions. Members, I must remind you that today's meeting must end by 3:30 in order to permit religious observance. I will now take the release of Member Holt. Please put your name on the list. Are there any releases? Councillor Cole?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Would you like to release your member's motion, MM 2736?
Yes, I would.
Okay. On favor? Show of hands, carried. Do we have any further releases? Councillor Bradford?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I can release MM 27.15.
MM 27.15, recorded vote. We can put the motion on the screen.
Can you read out the item name? I'm not able to get into CMP right now.
Yes, is that councillor bylaw? How do you vote then, please?
It's the "Don't leave Scarborough residents on the bus." Motion by councillor Matlow, seconded by councillor Ainsley. It's on the screen. Councillor McAlvy, can you see it on the screen?
Madam Speaker, but not in CMP?
Pardon?
Yes, I can see it on the screen, but I don't have the vote open, so they'll have to call me for my vote.
Is the vote open?
Speaker, we're going to actually cancel the vote and restart it because it appears not everybody received it in a timely fashion, so just stand by, please.
Okay, so we're going to cancel it and we can re-vote.
Speaker, we've restarted the vote. Councillor McAlvy, it appears to us that the vote has not been delivered to your computer.
I'm voting in the negative.
Thank you.
Councillor Thompson, I'm having the same problem that councillor McAlvy is having.
How do you vote, sir?
In the negative, thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, also, I just got kicked out of the system. I'm logging back in, but I would like to be recorded in the positive and the affirmative.
Thank you. Councillor Perks?
Speaker, it's councillor Perks. I will be voting in the affirmative.
And lastly, councillor Robinson. It appears to us you haven't received the vote, so if you could...
That's correct. I am voting in the negative.
Thank you. Speaker, the motion does not carry. The vote is eight to 15.
Madam Speaker, point of order, councillor Cole.
Councillor Cole?
Can I reopen my motion there to have a recorded vote? The one I just released, to make sure we got the right one here?
You don't know if we voted on your right motion?
I just wanted a recorded vote.
Okay.
I'll move to reopen. If somebody can move to reopen?
Okay, motion to reopen. You can move that. On favor, carried. We'll put the motion on the screen. That's MM 2736.
Members, just stand by for a moment while we set the vote up.
It's on the screen, councillor Cole.
Thank you very much.
Councillor McAlvy, how do you vote, please?
In the affirmative.
And councillor Perks, please.
Firm.
Thank you. And councillor Leyden, can you vote, please?
I thought I just did it through the system, but I was voting in the affirmative.
All right, could you try again? Is it open on your screen, councillor?
It was a second ago, and I hit refresh, and it disappeared. If this is on councillor Cole's motion, it was in the affirmative.
That's correct. Thank you. We'll register your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker, the motion carries unanimously, 23 in favor.
Do we have any further releases? No? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the order paper. Show of hands, carried. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is PH 19.6, RentSafe TO, Apartment Building Standards. Councillor Bylaw, you held the item down. Do we have questions to staff?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Through you, Madam Speaker. Can staff tell us what is, how many criteria are they currently going through in order to evaluate the buildings?
I'm sorry, if you could repeat the question, I just got on a bit late here.
Councillor?
How many different criteria do you take in consideration when evaluating the buildings?
Ah, sorry about that. We have 20 different categories.
And how do you weight these different categories?
And they each have a score from one till five, and based on the assessment by officers, those are compiled to get a score out of 100.
Okay, so, for example, and I saw the criteria, you know, if there's issues with cladding, for example, is given, is been, right now, it has the same weight as, for example, you know, problems with the heating system, where tenants are left without heating. So you're, the weight is exactly the same on this, on the existing evaluation model, right?
Through the speaker, you are correct.
Okay, and your proposal right now is asking us to go out and do the grading system of the red, yellow, and green, but you are proposing to change the evaluation after we launch this?
So through the speaker, that is correct. We recognize the need to improve the scoring system, to develop, you know, different weighting systems, but we feel we can fit it within the, within the color scheme that we're proposing, and our objective is to continually to improve the program and the weighting scores.
But don't you think it's going to create some confusion for tenants and landlords? I mean, you're changing this, I mean, you're launching something, and then you're changing it as you're launching it. Shouldn't we be finalizing the evaluation criteria first?
Through the speaker, fair question. It's something that we're working on, the importance of doing education upon implementation at both stages. We do need to have greater communications and outreach with tenants and explain what's happening. When we do make the change, we will actively communicate with tenants and landlords alike.
Okay, those are my questions, councillor. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Matlow, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Carlton, obviously more for my colleagues' audience. Would you concur with me that you and I have both heard significant concerns from Acorn and FMTA, along with other tenants, and that your office and my office have worked really well, and I would say even amicably together, to arrive at a resolution that will be reflected in a motion coming up in a few minutes?
Through the speaker, to the councillor, absolutely. This is a longstanding project for both of us. We've heard from tenants and associations numerously through our own individual outreach or through deputations over the years, loud and clear, the tenants, we have heard them, and I think we've worked really well with your office, with you and your team, and my team, as well as the tenants and associations. And I think what is going to come out in a motion later is a step forward and continually to improve the program, as I mentioned in my previous answers.
I feel the same way about your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, Mr. Grant, I'm wondering if you could tell us what you think the impact will be of this program, once fully implemented, on both, on both direct and indirect impacts on in-unit conditions. It's compliance with work orders for in-unit repairs and conditions that the tenants I've spoken to are most concerned about. Can this program have a greater impact on those?
So through the speaker, great question. Our evaluation will include in-suite complaints and service requests and responding to those as well. It is our objective of the program to improve the quality of housing that has to be beyond the common areas and the heating and the laundry rooms, so it does need to be in-suite as well. The program with the rating system will also allow prospective renters to understand in advance the type of building that they're getting into, how well it's doing, and I think that's, that is going to be something that's very helpful moving forward for new renters to understand, because when you look, you see an ad or you respond to it, and you see one unit, but you get to rent another, having a history and a knowledge similar to when you can buy a vehicle, this allows for a greater understanding of the history of that particular rental apartment building.
Okay, and you'll be reporting to us. We'll get an audit and an evaluation of how much compliance there was with orders and how many re-inspections you had to. We're going to get this report on a regular basis. Some of the residents I've talked to, though, are concerned that they fully engage in this program, if they, if they're, if they're more active in reporting to us to aid the whole process, that they face landlord intimidation. Has that been contemplated with respect to how you're going to consult with them? Because you have some consultation that you want to continue to do with the community. Do we, do we have, do we have some design that looks at that, that looks at making sure that they're consulting and commenting on this program and later engaging in the program in safe space without fear of intimidation?
Again, great question. We recognize that, and we consult with a range of stakeholders, we, various tenant groups, and we want to give them those assurances. We also then need to meet with the landlord groups as well and get that message across that that is not, is not good practice, that is not a best practice, and that is not necessarily acceptable. But we, tenants, need to feel free to say what they need to say to us in a safe space, and we will continue to do that and continue to provide that safe space.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, questions?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. Through you to Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant, in your last answer, you said something that caught my attention. You said that you'd like it so that tenants would have the same experience like when you buy a vehicle, paraphrasing, but could you expand on that just a little bit? What happens when you get a car?
So, maybe not the best example, but you get to test drive it, is more so what I was saying, and you can find out a vehicle history.
Right.
The rating system and us putting data online, on open data, us having annual reports and communicating this will give tenants, again, tenants who live in those buildings currently, and prospective renters, the opportunity to understand what they are getting into before they sign a lease and before they hand over first and last month's rent.
So you get a vehicle information package, right? It's one thing you can get from the ministry, and it gives you a bunch of information about the car that you're thinking of buying. It tells you about the history, the different owners, that kind of stuff. It's funny, I've got a motion that says something similar to that. I wondered if, you know, if I asked you to consider that, that is part of all this digital change that you're planning for, the RentSafe TO website, if there might be a way to create a report, so that if somebody says, "I'm interested in that building," they could click on it, and that report would consolidate various pieces of information. It could be the building score, it could be a little bit of history of complaints, that kind of thing, all within the rules, but it would be a nice little feature that you could hand somebody and say, you know, here's, in one piece of paper, this is a little story about this building from the city's perspective, with the city's eyes, instead of you going, have to go around and hunt for it all over the place. Do you think, if I asked you to consider that, you'd take a look?
Through the speaker, to the deputy mayor, yeah, we would consider looking at that. I think it's a, it should be manageable. We can continue to improve on our data. I know we've had this discussion before on filtering things and finding things, and you've done it a lot, and you're astute on it, and not everyone is, and if we can make it easier for tenants, absolutely.
Just more broadly now about the report. There is a little piece in there that just talks about the stigma associated with a color sign on a building, and I wondered if you could elaborate on some of the feedback you'd heard about that. What was the message that people were trying to say, at least the ones that spoke up about it, about if there was a red sign on the place that they lived?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, we've reported out on this a number of times, based on feedback that we've received from both tenants and landlords, that there could be a stigma of, you know, living in a red building or being associated with being in that particular building, and some of the issues that may come up around bullying at schools, that, you know, you live in this building and I live in this, it is not our intent to create those types of situations. It's being, it's important to do this from a human rights lens, and so it's something that we're aware of, where we're working on. We think with the other pieces that we've included is a score and a narrative, that it's not exactly akin to Dinesafe, where red means closed. We will not be closing apartment buildings.
Just with respect to the goal of this, right, is, you know, I think we want to motivate landlords to try to make improvements, to lift their score. Is there any teeth to a red sign? Like, I don't know how many landlords live in the buildings, right? Like, I don't even know if they'll even see the sign. Is there a difference between the sign and MLS actually issuing orders, which is something that can be dealt with in court, and that can actually prompt action? I just want to make sure that council understands, you know, the effect of these signs, right? Do they have teeth to them versus the standard process that we've got, where you go in and do the assessment and then issue very specific instructions that are enforceable under the law?
Again, thank you for the question. The signs should be a motivator to the landlords. No one wants to have a red building. The good part is there's only 30 in the city out of 3,500, so we want to get those 30 into yellow and up to green. It's important that we do a combination of both. We will still be issuing orders, notices, charges, doing remedial action if necessary, but the sign is, has, you know, different intent. It is to make sure that buildings continue to improve, that it's being, you know, identified as one that needs improvement, and I think that's, using our current tools and the sign will be important moving forward.
Thank you. Councillor McAlvy?
Good, Madam Speaker. My question is, what is the problem we are trying to solve?
So, thank you for the question. The problem we are trying to solve is the landlords have, some landlords across the city have let their buildings fall into disrepair. We feel it's important for tenants to have quality living standards, at a high standard, and in order to meet those standards, we've developed this program in such a way that landlords need to turn their mind to having capital plans, to having cleaning plans, to having a number of different plans that ensure that your building is kept to the standard that tenants deserve.
Okay, and I haven't seen this motion that's coming up later, but if we were to go with the system that has the red, yellow, green, how are you resourced? And, for example, if a building was red and solutions were made quickly, do you have resources so that you could be running around, re-inspecting right away and changing signs back, or would these signs be there for a period of time?
Thank you for the question. So that's, that's one of the challenges that we're looking to resolve. We want to spend our time in the worst buildings, getting them up to yellow and to green. That requires detailed audits, and that requires providing notices to the landlord of what they're required to fix. We want to use our resources effectively to be focused on those buildings, and we don't want to use our resources to be, we're not as nimble to be changing a sign every day or every week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Through you to Mr. Grant, and I think you've answered a number of the questions that I was going to ask, that councillor Holliday is asking, also part of one that councillor McAlvy has just asked. But, so can you tell me, with respect to our Toronto community housing, does this color coding system, does it apply to Toronto community housing properties as well?
Yes, it does. The, the only point of clarification, the difference, they go through the same process, the same signs, they just are exempt from fees.
From the fees, that's, that's the difference. So we're going to be held to the same high standards of expectation that we're hoping to hold the private sector?
That is correct.
Right, and so, if a landlord does not do the work based on the color coding system, it's not clear to me, so we are going to hire a contractor to go in to do the work on behalf of the city, and we'll add back, add it to their taxes to be paid later?
So through the speaker, and thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Thompson, what we are doing is, that is one of our tools, we want to use the audit to identify notices for them to repair within, you know, 15 days, 30 days, 60 days, whatever a reasonable timeframe is. Failure to do that, we would use one of our tools, and that is remedial action, but we only want to use that in instances where they haven't done what they should do. We need landlords to be accountable and be their own property managers. We, as the city, do not want to become their property managers.
Right. The system that we have now, though, does it allow you to take the action in terms of doing the remedial action that you referenced?
I believe what we've done is strengthened that through this report. We have not done a lot of remedial action related to this program, and we will be moving forward if we need to. We've increased fines, we've increased the opportunity to use remedial action, all in an effort to improve the quality of housing for these tenants.
Right, and so, currently, some of the challenges I've seen in the system, some of the challenges I've had in my own ward, where you go in and you issue a citation, and the matter goes to court, then it gets elongated. Does that, does this color coding system, does that change that? Because when the matter goes to court, we at that point don't have the ability to intervene. We have to wait for that process to take place. Is that not correct?
That is correct. There's still an opportunity, because some of these are property standards appeals, and there is an appeal process, and it can go before the, before the courts, but, again, the intent of the color coding is to motivate to be, you know, to be the best building that you can be, and to get from red to yellow to green.
So I thought when I heard part of your response to a question that was asked earlier, you talk about the sort of, you know, the signage and the impact and the issue around whether or not it stigmatizes those who live in those particular properties. I thought I heard you intimated that, you know, that the, the sort of requirement for landlord, to be a good landlord, it would somehow have an impact in terms of tenants choosing to live in that building or another building, given the choice. But my question to you, though, is, given the shortage of rental unit that exists in this city, is this really practical to make that assumption? I mean, clearly, we want to make sure properties are clean and well-maintained, and so I get that, but I'm just wondering if the color coding system that's being proposed, whether or not that actually shames a landlord into action, that would somehow dissuade someone from wanting to rent, given the fact that we have such great shortage in the city?
So, great question, and, yeah, we don't know if the color coding system is going to have the intended effect, that we're, we hope it does. You're right, there is a shortage of rental housing, and people need to find where they can live, but it's just, the, just the difference with Dinesafe is that people don't have as much choice. It's not like a restaurant, right? So we can always go to the next restaurant, but it's not as easy to go to the next rental apartment.
Right, that was the point. Thank you.
No, great point.
Thank you. I have a question, actually councillor Thompson asked one of my questions about Toronto housing, but when it comes to Toronto housing, we are waiving the fees, but as far as the color coding sign, would that still be in our, in the buildings?
Yes, to the speaker. Yes, the color coding system will be in all buildings that fall within the program, including Toronto Community Housing and some of the other housing that
So the sign
SSHA have, yes.
Yeah, okay, even though their fees are waived, they still will be monitored, and as far as the number of issues that have come up from MLS in some of our units, correct?
That is correct. I do want to point out that TCHC buildings under our current I do want to point out that TCHC buildings under our current program do, their averages are very similar to private buildings.
Okay. Now, I know when we started this, we started at Government Management a few years ago when we heard a number of deputations on this issue. And the reason for this is because of the number of calls that we were getting in from tenants on some of these buildings, where we had some landlords where the buildings have, you know, landlords have refused to repair some of these buildings. And so that's where we started. That was a few years ago through Government Management. And that's the reason why we're here today is to bring this forward, correct? So it's been a long time that we've been working on this. Am I correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we've been working on this since 2012. This program used to be called MRAB. And it was through government and licensing, because that's where MLS reported. It's evolved with the new system that this is a housing matter. And so that's why the last time this has come through Planning and Housing Committee. But yeah, this has been a longstanding piece of work, and through a lot of effort, it is where it is today.
Now, we're still doing audits of our buildings? Are we still continuing that in some of the problem buildings?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Yes, we did stop providing these services in the early months of the pandemic, but we brought it back online. And again, our focus this year has been on the lowest-scoring buildings. And, you know, we did 17 audits in the summer, and audits are extensive pieces of work.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Counselor Fletcher?
Yes, could you just walk me through, from doing an inspection and finding the violations, the timeline? How long is a landlord given to remedy? Can they get an extension? Are there posted violation notices or notices that indicate the work that needs to be done? Just walk us through that, please.
Sure. I'm actually going to ask if my director for this program, Elizabeth Glibbery, could walk us through that?
Could you hold my time, please, Speaker? Thank you.
Do we have staff here?
Yeah. Elizabeth, I see you there. You just need to unmute.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
There you are.
Okay, so Counselor Fletcher, through the speaker. Through the speaker. When a complaint is received, staff attend within five days. At the point of attendance, depending on what the issue is, emergency of the issue, a notice is issued, or an order is issued, and the tenant or the landlord has a certain amount of time to respond.
How much time?
Minimum for the property standards order is usually around 19 days. It could be lengthier, though, depending on what the issue is. Or if it's deemed an emergency, it could be within a very short time, like an emergency order, it would be like within 24 hours, if it's a heat issue, for example.
Okay. And can they appeal that? Is that appealable or?
Absolutely. So through the speaker, they have 14 days to appeal the order. And if they do appeal the order, it goes to PSAC, which they can make changes to the time to comply. They can modify the order, or they can rescind the order.
And so it could be quite a lengthy process?
Absolutely. Through the speaker, Counselor, it could be very lengthy.
If a landlord. And at what point do you intervene and say, we have to fix it? Along, before the city actually starts that work?
Yeah, through the speaker. At the point where it's impacting directly on health or safety of those tenants. And we've had a few cases recently where we had to actually intervene and take over the remedial action that was required on one of our apartment buildings.
Yes, I'm aware. And, but are those violations posted anywhere online? Like Dinesafe, you can see about the inspection and what mattered or didn't meet code or wasn't properly done?
Through the speaker. Yeah, through the speaker. The notices or orders should be posted on the tenant board. I do believe they're online, but it's just an investigation that's online, not the actual order or notice. It's just that the investigation has occurred and the status of the investigation.
And the, we have a, this is just different things that we have. We have Dinesafe, which has the cards. We have a childcare system. Maybe I'll ask the deputy city manager, if she's there, about this one. Every childcare, every licensed childcare has a rating system that we use. Are those posted in the childcare centers, or are those posted online?
Through the chair, could you just clarify that question for?
No, no. No, no, I think it's a question for Deputy City Manager Carbone or Shanley, if they, if they're on this item.
And are there any other types of rating systems that we have outside of the two, the Dinesafe and the childcare ratings?
Okay, do we have staff to answer that question?
Yep.
Okay.
My apology, Madam Speaker. Sorry, Counselor Fletcher, can you just repeat that question? I don't think Shanley's on.
Okay. We're just talking about different rating systems that the city currently has. And we have a rating system that exists in public health, which is Dinesafe, which is on the business. And then we have a rating system for childcare centers. Is that posted at the childcare, or is that simply online? I don't know yet, sir.
So I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's online. I'm not sure if it's posted. I know it's online. I can get that information and email you later this afternoon, or later today, Counselor Fletcher, if that's okay?
Yes, all right. Thank you very much. And now I just want to go back to you, Mr. Grant. You now have a roster through RentSafe. You now have a roster of contractors that you can call without going on each kind of repair for violations. You would have to go out and individually select a contractor based on three quotes or based on a tender. Now that you've done the roster, you have much more ability to intervene quickly to fix situations. Am I right about that?
That was your last question.
Yes, that is correct. We have learned over the years that we need that fluidity, and we have established contracts that allow us to hire people quicker to do remedial action when necessary, yes.
Like other departments have.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Grimes, question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Carlton, under the same line of question as Counselor, Deputy Mayor Thompson, there's not a lot of supply out there. So a lot of people living in some of these buildings. I got a couple bad operators in my ward where...
Sorry, I've lost his audio. Sorry, Counselor Grant, there you go.
Going to stop. Can you hear me better now, Carlton?
Yes, you're back on.
Yeah, so just under the same line of question as Counselor Thompson, some of these tenants don't really know they have mental health issues, may not know there's an option, and it's very limited to go somewhere else. But we have a lot of bad operators in my ward, which your office has helped us out tremendously. But some of these frequent flyers that are bad acts, is there a possibility with all this government assistance they're getting directly from the government, from, you know, your income, whatever, is there a possibility of holding their rent back? Just like we have in COVID times where we're not allowing them to evict them? But is there a tool to maybe say, look, you can evict this tenant, and we're not going to pay you until it's fixed? Is that a tool in your toolbox we may be able to use? Maybe a question for Lee, I'm not too sure.
Yeah, so through the speaker to Counselor Grimes, that is, yeah, that is not under our purview. The program doesn't allow for involvement with tenants' rent or, you know, increases or decreases, no.
But is that something we can look at?
I don't think so. Landlord-tenant issues are provincial with the Residential Tenancies Act. I know there's a group at the city on rent evictions. Perhaps that's a logical place for it. Perhaps the housing secretary, but it is not a municipal licensing and standards matter that we can intervene on.
Okay. Those are my questions, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to speakers now. If you want to speak, if you can, please put your name. Counselor Bylaw to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. As you mentioned in your remarks, this has been a long time in the works. But as you've heard, I think, from our staff, I think there are some things that are still in the works, and particularly with regards to the criteria, the categories, the weight. I think staff have identified in the report that this is something that they need to continue to work with. My issue is that I think this needs to be settled before it actually, the program starts. I think it is fair that we have more of a decisive approach. I think it's going to be a lot fair for tenants and landlords if they know what they're clearly being evaluated and they have the proper wage, the fine on these things. I do understand that there's a motion that has been worked on, and that's why I'm not moving a motion, because I think it responds to some of these concerns that we outlined even when this report was at committee. I think that also important is the fact that we need to ensure that there's an opportunity to focus on the buildings that are red and to ensure that they move quickly to the green. I think that staff got it right. I think they really need to focus on those red buildings. And the last point that I would like to make is, you know, I do understand some of the concerns with the stigma that might be allocated, but this actually goes in line with the comments that were made about the lack of supply. There is very, very shortage of housing out there, and there's not a lot for people to choose from. And I do think that we have to do everything we possibly can to ensure that these buildings have the best quality of housing possible. And I think that's where the program is trying to get. And in particular, in a very tight rental market, this is very important, that the city is on top of these buildings and working with landlords and tenants to ensure that the stock that we have available in the city is in the best possible shape to house the families in here. So I'll, I haven't seen the full motion, but I think that it responds to some of the concerns that are raised here. And I'm looking forward to taking a look and being able to support this going forward, but with several amendments that respond to these concerns.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday, followed by Counselor Matlow.
Thank you, Speaker. I do have a motion. It's fairly short. I hope it's agreeable to everybody. It's just to ask the municipal licensing and standards to consider developing a RentSafe TO report, just using existing data, so that it can be provided to prospective tenants and existing tenants. And we would require the landlords to provide it. So if I, I'm just going to talk a little bit more about this report in general. I've thought a lot about it. I can't support recommendations one and two as written. We'll see what the amendments are that are coming along. I don't, no one's talked to me about them, but I don't know. To me, if you have this great big red sign in front of the door when you walk into your home, it gets humiliating. It's like somebody took a, painted a big X on the door, like the plague is in this building. I guess, you know, that'd be nice to put some pressure on some landlords to do something, but if you've got a building score of 37 today, you can go online, you can download them all, by the way. You just go to OpenDaddy, download the spreadsheet, they're all there. But I guess it's a lot to expect everybody to hunt out this information online. I don't think it's going to change the landlord. I mean, I disagree with the sentiments of others. I think the only people humiliated in this are going to be the people that actually live there, because they don't have a choice. They can't just pack up and leave. If they're in a rent-protected suite, they can't afford to necessarily just pack up and leave. So, you know, what's going to be done? Well, what needs to be done, of course, is to continue to enforce and inspect buildings, to issue orders, to follow through on courts, to make sure that people complete these activities. The only idea I thought that we could try to influence is consumer choice at the outset. So when somebody goes to rent a building, can we, can we as a city provide them information that might help them make their choice? Maybe they don't have a choice, I don't know. I mean, the rental market is pretty tough, as Deputy Mayor Bylaw mentioned. But my thought is, is, you know, just like when you buy a used car, you can get an information package from the government, or if you want, you can go and download consumer reports from, or look it up at the library. You can learn a little bit about the product that you're trying to get. If we could pull together information like the building score, if we could pull together information like recent complaints or investigation requests, if we could put things like orders onto a, you know, a one-page report that somebody can download from the internet easily, if we force landlords to hand that to the consumer before they sign the lease, maybe we can influence something here. Maybe we can influence a discussion about the rent price, if that's what's being negotiated on the lease. But to me, putting a big red sign up is, it's like a big red flag or a pox on the building. And I don't think that helps a lot for the tenants that live there. I suspect the landlords that are the troublemakers, the ones with the scores that stay low, they don't think they're going to be influenced by a sign. I doubt they even go on site to even look at it. It's, it needs to be enforced through the courts. It needs to be enforced with real costs and penalties. And I think we have a very good MLS department to do that. I hope they continue it. I hope they're able to spend more resources on it as we get through COVID, and they can turn their attention back to these type of important things. Madam Speaker, those are my comments. Unless things are modified, I'm going to ask to separate the vote on item number one and two, because I will support the balance of the report, but the specific color-coded card, I don't agree with. And I think, I think we can do this better. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matlow to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I asked the clerk earlier to advance, circulate the motion. I hope that you've all received it. And either way, obviously, I move it before you now. What this motion is, is, as I alluded to in my questions to Carlton, a reflection of us really compiling these specific concerns that we've been hearing, in particular from organizations such as Acorn and FMTA, who have been really the leaders and champions of these initiatives over the past few years. And work with Carlton and his team to ensure that the implementation considers issues with the initial construction of how they were going to go about it with respect to like not having, for example, two tiers of green, which just would have been confusing, and wouldn't have really had a proper incentive for landlords to go to the upper tier of green rather than rest on the lower tier of green, for example. Or have a word like excellent, for example, which, you know, is more like a first-grade report card rather than what I believe we're trying to achieve here. It also allows, this motion allows for more flexibility to more accurately reflect where a landlord has arrived at throughout the year rather than depending on arbitrary annual or biannual audit. So that should be better for both landlords, frankly, because if they're, let's say, stuck in a red or a yellow, they'll be able to get to green if they make improvements within that year, but also more accurately informative for tenants, so that they're not stuck in a situation where they keep complaining about bedbugs, for example, and the landlord is still at green. So in other words, it's just more accurate and it better reflects the facts. So in other words, it's just more accurate and it better reflects the facts for everybody involved. It has been, as you may remember, like when we first initiated this out of the tenants advisory committee, you know, there was a bit of a, there was some friction with the staff. Certainly, lobbyists from the landlords were coming after us at that time, and it was really difficult. But Acorn and FMTA and others really, really went to work on this. And since then, our relationship with staff has not only evolved into one that has been constructive, it has been a pleasure to work with them. They get it, they're hearing us, they've been proactive. And in fact, there have been moments where, even though I thought that I was right and I thought that I had a good idea, staff have provided information to us and have done a better job. And really, we've arrived at a really, really good place. In particular, I want to thank my chief of staff, Andrew Ethanaju, who's been deeply passionate about this, and also Ginny Addy from Municipal Licensing and Standards, who has just done remarkable work, along with Carlton Grant and their entire team. And I also want to thank, again, Acorn and FMTA. Your advocacy on behalf of tenants is noticed, it's effective, you achieve results. And it's because of your work that we've successfully approved motions over and over again to raise the standards that we expect as a city for tenants, no matter if they're in a privately owned building or Toronto community housing alike. The last thing I just wanted to note on is this issue around stigma. We had this debate before. What tenants consistently tell us is, is that a sign isn't going to further stigmatize them. They're stigmatized by the shame of not even wanting to invite family or friends sometimes to their building because of the conditions that it's left. So we had that debate. This debate now is about the process of implementation, rather than whether or not we're going to do this. We've already moved motions and approved them, I believe, three times to ask staff to do this, and now we're discussing how to do it well. So thank you for your ongoing support for tenants in this city, to all of you.
Thank you. Councillor Perks to speak, followed by Councillor McKelvey.
Speaker, I'm going back and forth with the clerks on a motion that I am trying to prepare that would keep the program but remove the signs on the building. We're trying to find the right words. If you could bump me down until we've settled on something?
Sure. Councillor McKelvey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'm comforted to hear that Councillor Perks is working on that motion. I am very troubled by putting up a sign that's red or orange or yellow on a building. And I do think that it stigmatizes residents. And, you know, I grew up in a building and I had, you know, I considered my kids that were rich were kids that lived in a house or had a car. And I can remember, you know, dating somebody and his mother dropped him off, and she was mortified that I lived in an apartment building, in a suburban apartment building. And I can't even imagine what that would be like if they had showed up and there was a yellow or a red sign in the lobby. It does further stigmatize people. And I asked the question about what is the problem we are trying to solve? And do we have the ability to go back and change those signs if the problem is remedied? And the answer was that we don't. So we need to think about how we can do that better. I do agree with the premise that we need to stop these buildings from being in these conditions, and we need to have a way to improve them. But I don't think a sign in a lobby is going to achieve that. So I can't support recommendation two in the form that it's in. I appreciate that we are trying to have some sort of indicators. I'm hopeful that Councillor Perks can find a solution that is a better one, because we do need to make the information available to the people in the building, and we need to put pressure onto landlords. But having a red sign isn't the way to go. This isn't like going into a restaurant. You have the choice to turn around and go somewhere else. If you live in the building, it's very hard to move out of there and find somewhere else to live. So I'm hopeful that we can have a better way to do it than number two. I wish Councillor Perks good luck in that.
Thank, thank you. Councillor Carroll.
Madam Speaker, I know there are motions coming, but I'm going to speak a little differently than the others for a moment now. And I think it might be geography that creates the difference here. The sign on the front door is a real challenge if you're in a building that's right front-facing and it's up on the sidewalks, such as you see as you move further into town. But, you know, the tenants that I work with, that we speak to about this, are living in a tower-in-the-park type of setting and sitting up on a lovely landscaped hill is a building full of bedbugs. And they just want these things changed. And if the sign on the door means that as an empty, as a unit empties out, you can't get anyone to come back in because that sign is on the door, and maybe that causes the landlord to finally take some actions, is, just the few people that I've talked to, it's hard during pandemic times, but just the few I've talked to are willing to take the chance on the sign if it changes things. Asking those who are already in situ to keep track of their building online and check into things is a tough thing to ask of people who are living the kind of life you're living if you're struggling to cover the rent in a red building. It means that you've got probably a family unit that has cobbled together a bunch of precarious work to pay that rent. And on top of that, you don't want to make waves and be intimidated by your landlord. So the idea that the city engages, puts their sign up, and initiates their own actions to start to get some action from that landlord, was kind of comforting to the people I talked to. I don't have to get intimidated. You guys are going to take hard and visible action and finally change something here. I won't have to risk eviction by being the squeaky wheel. And so I think, I guess it depends on the situations you've been through or where the building is and how it's situated, how you feel about the sign. Because I heard people say, yeah, yeah, you do it, you go, do this. Get some change between you and the landlord, so I'm not at risk. And that's why I asked the questions that I asked about can we actually enact this program? And can we talk to the tenants and follow up on these things and make this change without the tenants risking landlord intimidation? Because I think that is far more prevalent than we even realize in our tenant population. I wish, I really wish, that I got far more complaints than I do. I know when I walk into some of the buildings in Town Valley North, that I should be getting calls from the people in that building every day by the dozens. And I'm not, because they've given up. And so those that we sought out and asked about this, they said, yeah, throw that sign up so that a big conversation starts between you and your staff and the landlord, and you make something happen. So I, you know, I look with interest at the motion that might be coming forward as an alternative to the sign, but not everyone is against it, including tenants that would be subject to living in a building with a red sign. So I'll see what the motion says. But I will just finish by saying this, Madam Speaker. I think we do want to, whatever are the bylaw changes that now allow Mr. Grant's team to become more aggressive, while we may be making some refinements to them, we do have to make these first steps to give them the powers and the direction to get this program to perfection. That Councillor Bylaw in the very first speech said there are some things that still need to be solidified for her to be comfortable with the program. But let's give the legal powers that we can to staff today and allow them to aggressively push on the province. And if you really want to see a difference for these Ontarians, you need to let us go forward with these things and become a real part of the picture. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Ford.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I, this is, this is really a, what, this is a tough kind of decision to make for this council. But the one thing I am hardened by is that I think we all are on the same page on really holding landlords to account here and to bring their building standards up. And I think we all want the outcome of that. I think it's how we get there. And quite frankly, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not 100% decided on what way I'm going to fall on this. But, but look, the one thing I hear in North Etobicoke, and I've been out, I get calls from many of constituents about building standards. I know we all do. And we do have these challenges in North Etobicoke. We have many high-rises and high-rise apartment buildings in North Etobicoke. But I think the question is how we get there. I, in the pros and cons of putting these colored signs in lobbies, for me, I think, yes, it does put pressure on the landlords. I don't think the side of this debate around landlords just ignoring it and not caring is necessarily true. I do put weight to that where it does build pressure, because when, you know, residents of those buildings walk in, that would no doubt put more pressure on them and kind of anger residents. And we don't want to anger them, but it does put more pressure on the landlords, which is what we want to make these changes. But on the other side, I do see the stigmatization. And that I take particular concern with. I do have much concern with that. And it's finding out if there's a way of getting to a place where we can continue to put in strong pressure, immense pressure, on the landlords to do better, to make these capital investments, so residents in our city have a decent place to live, which is absolutely a fundamental right. And I've done battle with landlords, believe me, in North Etobicoke over this. I've walked every floor and down the stairwells and garbage chutes. And I know we all have. And it's incredibly frustrating to see the, you know, the conditions people in, in some of these buildings. So I, I'm going to wait to see what Councillor Perks comes up with. You know, as Councillor McKelvey said, you know, I think if there's a better way of doing this, I will support that. So I want to see what comes out of that. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just make a few comments till Councillor Perks' motion is ready. I'll wait as well for motion by Councillor Perks. But as it was mentioned, we started this whole process in 2012 of government management. And at that time, there was an outcry from tenants on some of the conditions of some of the buildings, where you did have cockroaches and it wasn't properly maintained, no hot water, elevators not working, that were totally filthy. And we would constantly have to send MLS out to investigate. And we've done a number of audits as well. It was getting very frustrating. And so when we started the whole process, we had deputations from tenants and as well as from landlords. And I must say, since we started this whole process now, we, I think that the number of landlords that are out there are actually listening to us, that we do mean business when it comes to their buildings. It all started out with some of these buildings where we had some landlords that didn't care and, you know, they knew this, you know, there was nothing tenants could do. It would take so long for the city to go in and investigate and give orders. And so it started there. And, you know, and with Toronto Housing as well, a lot of complaints. But as you know, just recently, we took contract management out of Toronto Housing, and we have it in-house now. So hopefully, that would change as far as our Toronto Housing tenants in our buildings. But that's why we started this whole process. And I think that we, it's important that we hold the landlords accountable, we do something. And so I'm listening to the debate, the questions. So depending on what Councillor Perks' motion will come forward, I think that we need, as a council, to move forward on with some of these recommendations. We need to protect our tenants that we have the most vulnerable in our buildings that are asking for the city to support them. And so I'm looking forward to Councillor Perks' motion. And I'm hoping that we could come forward with a compromise. You know, the intent on making the landlords accountable, but at the same time protecting the tenants as well. So thank you. Do we have Councillor Perks' motion?
I believe we do.
Councillor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. So as you know, I have a motion. I'm moving that we delete recommendations one, two, and four, and replace instead that City Council amend the municipal code, chapter three, four, five, apartment buildings to require apartment building owners and operators to inform all current and prospective tenants of the rating of their apartment buildings and the evaluation used to create the rating. Effectively, we keep the, we keep the ability to score buildings. We keep the commitment to the inspections and the inspection fees. We keep the rating. We simply don't post it on the building. This, I have been involved with Councillor Matlow and others on this since the idea first germinated. And I share the concerns and the passion that Councillor Matlow and tenant organizers have brought to this issue. But I ask myself, what is the purpose of putting a sign on the building? The people we are trying to protect are tenants who live in the building and prospective tenants who are considering moving into the building. They need to be informed. They absolutely need to be informed. My motion attempts to do that. Councillor Carroll got me thinking. It's, you know, tenants aren't coming forward enough. So some tenant organizers are saying you have to take the relationship away from it being the tenant versus the landlord, which is an unequal relationship. And I agree with that reasoning. I don't think posting a sign on a building changes the power relationship between people who own property and people who rent a place to live. Over the years, we have many times considered different tools for rebalancing that relationship. And we had an interesting deputation at the tenant committee that Councillor Fletcher chairs and Councillor Bradford and I sit on, the rent eviction committee. And a deputy there told us that in every neighborhood in Montreal, there's a community organization that provides organizing supports to tenants. Think of our Metro Tenant Federation having an office in every neighborhood. And it occurred to me, we do and have a tool, we do have a tool that gives tenants the power to take on landlords who are not achieving good-quality buildings. It's the Tenant Defense Fund. And it occurred to me that when we come into the budget debate this year, we should look at greatly increasing the resources available through the Tenant Defense Fund, so that tenants have power in their own hands to take on landlords who aren't filling requests to improve units. We should also consider some reforms to the Property Standards Appeal Committee that we operate, to make that committee give tenants equal access. We should also consider whether we adequately resource municipal licensing and standards. So there are a whole lot of things we can do that rebalance the power relationship between tenants and landlords and use the tools available to the city of Toronto to make sure that tenants can speak for themselves, rather than us presuming to speak for them by posting a color-coded sign on the building where they live. It just strikes me as an approach that is more committed to equity and justice than putting a label on a place where somebody lives. I've been struggling with this, and Councillor Matlow will remember. I've been struggling with this and Counselor Matlow will remember, I raised these terms when he first proposed this approach. And at the end of the day, after talking to a lot of people who have lived as tenants most of their lives, I've just come to the conclusion that if our effort is to make sure tenants have power, this is the wrong way to do it.
Thank you. I want to remind members of council that we have six items left and we have to finish by 3:30. We do have questions for you, Counsel Perks. Three minutes clarification of the motion. Counselor Matlow.
Counsel Perks, given that this has been, this specific initiative has been approved by council three times. Staff went out to consultation with, whether it be groups like FMTA, Acorn, and any other tenants who wanted to engage in the process. And there was a full consultation. And then Acorn, FMTA, all those tenants engaged with staff, with my office, sure with others. And the result has been what we are considering today. Do you really think that it's right to just ignore all of that and dismiss it? When honestly, the only time I've ever heard about this stigma argument has either been, and I say this with respect, in this room or I've heard it from the lobbyists, who I'm sure you've heard it too, right, who went on this campaign. But we haven't heard it directly from those organizations.
Counselor Matlow, your question, please. Clarification of the motion.
Why do you believe it's right to do this?
Counselor Matlow's question, and I'm prepared to answer it, Speaker. First, Counselor Matlow, I need to correct your recollection. I raised this with you when you and I were sitting together on the Tenant Advisory Committee last term. I raised this concern with you there. The second point, you asked me if I am concerned because council has already decided on this. This very morning, I voted on a motion you put in front of council because the city clerk said council reserves the right to change its mind. So that's your second point. As to your third point, you suggest that only lobbyists have mentioned this. I remind you again that I raised this with you personally at the very beginning of this process. As to whether or not I am ignoring the advice of some tenant advocacy organizations, I want to be very, very clear. Our job is to listen to what people are advising us and to ask critical questions about it and to think through the public policy implications and achieve what they are asking us to achieve. FMTA, for example, has repeatedly raised concerns about whether we adequately funded the Tenant Defense Fund. They've repeatedly raised questions about the performance of our property.
We're on agreement on that.
I'm sorry, I'm answering your question.
Counselor Matlow, please don't interrupt Counsel Perks. Your time is up. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Counsel Perks. Counselor Carroll, three minutes clarification of the motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, I get that we're doing the municipal code piece, but I'm having trouble understanding how your very simplified motion, how it's going to insert itself into the power dynamic that exists between landlord and tenant. With the current tenants in a red building where if you just have to go to them and say, guess what, we're a red building, in many cases, and he will say, and it's your fault because you don't put your food in Tupperware. And the power dynamic is still there. With the new tenant who has no rental history in Toronto and is just desperate to get a roof over their head, he says, we're a red building and that's why the rent's what it is and take it or leave it, bye-bye. And the power dynamic doesn't change at all versus the public facing of the sign that creates some sort of business problem for them.
Counselor Carroll, your question, please.
Yeah. Are you sure that your simplified motion is actually going to change that power dynamic?
No, we won't change the power dynamic just by this motion, no. And just one little thing to note, the motion says both to tell them the color and the evaluation on which the color is based, so they'll have more information. I agree with you completely that this program is not the way to change the power dynamic between tenants and landlords. A sign won't do it. I think you and I both know that. What I'm constrained though, because the way we make decisions here, you can only bring changes that fit the item that's in front of you. I can't, for example, attach a motion saying, let's triple the size of the funding for the Tenant Defense Fund today. I can't do that. I wish I could, and if I could, I would. Nor can I get into the guts of how the administration of the Property Standards Appeal Tribunal works. But I know that that step in the process of following through on a property standards violation notice can cause enormous delays. I've got a building in my ward where there have been outstanding property standards issues going back to the 1970s. And posting a sign doesn't fix that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's my question, thanks.
Okay, members, I want to remind you that we need to finish by 3:30. Counselor Ford, question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Counselor, three to Counsel Perks. So I think I'm going to be supporting your motion, Counsel, but my question around this is, so in terms of putting a sign up in the lobby, at least we know what's done. At least we know landlords are doing that. This way, I'm just trying to grasp in how you think we're going to ensure that landlords are distributing this to tenants. Like, how do we ensure that happens? And then would there be any consequences in this if they don't? I don't know if that's an appropriate question for staff, but I would ask you.
Yeah, I appreciate the concern. I appreciate the concern. Let me answer it this way. Doing something because we can see that it's done doesn't mean we're solving a problem, right? And so, like I said, I've been struggling with this issue for a few years now, and there are many, many, many aspects of it. And I just ask myself, so if our goal is to make sure that tenants and prospective tenants know, why wouldn't we tell them? And what is the purpose of telling everybody else whoever visits or walks by that building? There's no purpose in it. In fact, there are potentially harms in it. Yes, administratively, it will be difficult to confirm that every prospective tenant has or gets the information. It will be difficult to confirm that the landlord has told all the current tenants. There are ways of doing it. There are ways of doing it. We could maybe send you, Counselor Ford, or some member of staff around as a secret shopper to find out if landlords are sharing. There are ways of achieving it. I felt that I couldn't lay it out in detail today in a simple motion, but I have full confidence in municipal licensing and staff. If we give them a clear message today, this is what we want to achieve, they will figure out how to achieve it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bylaw, question?
Counselor Perks, I just want to make sure I'm reading your motion correct. So you still are saying to have a sign with information, but it's not a color sign, but a sign that has the percentage. If they get 50% or if they got 80%, is still available in a visible location?
It's available in a visible location. Whether the location is outward-facing or not, I don't know. The point is to make sure tenants know.
Okay.
And to make sure tenants know, but not to make this something that screams to everyone who comes to visit or maybe someone who's making a delivery or someone who's casually walking by or lives across the street. It's not their business.
And the program stays, you mean, you're not changing anything on the program?
Not.
Criteria, waiting in, MLS? Okay.
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor Thompson, you had a question?
Quick one, Madam Speaker. So through you to Counsel Perks. So no scarlet letters or signs, is that correct?
That's my goal, Counselor.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll be supporting you.
Okay, so, okay, let's put the motions on the screen. Counselor Perks', Counsel Perks' motion goes first. We'll ask for a recorded vote.
Counselor Layden, it appears to us that the vote has not been delivered to your screen. Can you refresh or otherwise advise us verbally of how your votes are?
Refreshing bumped me off. I'll be voting in the affirmative, please.
Thank you. The vote is 16 to 4. Members, just stand by so we can display the vote.
Yeah, I see it.
We're just waiting to display the vote for the public. Just one moment, Speaker. Madam Speaker, we've just reviewed the remaining motions in light of the vote that council just took. And Counselor Matlow's motion 2A is the next motion. Part one of that motion is now redundant, but we believe that part two of that motion is in order and as amended. In other words, once the meeting is over, when the minutes are prepared, the part B of that motion, if it carries, will be amended in accordance with the decision council's just made, if you follow me. So we can put part B to a vote.
Can we put that part on the screen? Did the members of council hear that? So what is it that we're voting on?
So, Speaker, just to reiterate, the next vote would be on part two of Counselor Matlow's motion 2A. Part two, as it may be amended by the action council just took.
Okay, are members of council clear on what we're voting on?
I'm not, Madam Speaker. Which Recommendations 1 to 5 are these now referring to, please?
Speaker, that's, my recommendation to you is that the vote on part two, it would be part two as amended. And when we say as amended, what that means is that we will consolidate that in the preparation of the minutes and delete those portions of part two that no longer apply. But I do believe, Speaker, that some parts of that part of the motion continue to apply.
Counselor Holliday, did you hear that?
I did. So if I understand, ignore the numbers and understand the spirit, is that some recommendations will apply now? Sorry, some recommendations will apply in December and the others will apply in April.
Just for greater certainty then, Madam Speaker, that is correct. As I look at this section, it does refer to the effective date for amendments to Chapter 354 and amendments to Chapter 441. As council has just deleted anything with respect to fees, then obviously that part of this motion does not survive. There's no need to amend Chapter 441 because the fees have not, other than in Rec. 3, I'm advised, that's right.
Okay, is everyone okay? Hello, is everyone okay? Please show your hands. I just, if you can, I just want to know if everyone's okay with the...
Speaker?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson here. I'm just still trying to digest this. I wonder whether or not we could allow staff to take a moment in order to ensure that it could be fully restructured in a way that presents us, as members of council, something a little more congruent for us to vote on, that we could see and be able to explain to our constituents. At this moment, I'm not able to explain that. I understand the issues around the date, but I think staff should just take the time to do it properly in order to allow the vote. So maybe we can hold this down and then allow them to do that and bring it back.
I agree, Counselor Thompson, why don't we just take out the part that we're actually voting on? So let's hold the item down.
Sure.
Okay, it looks, it sounds like they want to do it now.
Okay, so can we see it again?
Well, I don't know.
Or maybe have Mr. Albert just do a quick explanation again so that, I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on. That's all I'd like to do.
Okay, give us 30 seconds. Maybe some councillors while we're waiting could think about releasing some of these items or they'll have to be, no, no, not to do it now, just for them to think about it. Or we'll have to, we'll have to send it to our next council meeting because we still have a number of items here. So think about it in the next 30 seconds.
On a point of order, I understand it may not be precise procedure, but can we, if staff could offer a comment that these are acceptable or not acceptable to them, maybe that would make it easier for us?
We cannot start that, Speaker. I'm sorry.
Bad practice, don't open that door.
Okay, just hold on. We're not going there. Okay, just one sec. Just give the staff some time to digest, unless Counselor Matlow just wants to withdraw his motion. his motion.
Why don't we just refer that motion to staff for reporting back if there's any implications in having changed the other, the other rating system, that's all.
That, that may be a good idea.
I'm happy to do that.
Well, just a sec. Staff is not recommending it.
Madam Speaker, maybe I'll just try one more time to explain what I think is the effect here, and then maybe that'll help. This motion by Counselor Matlow changes the enforced dates of the regime that Counsel is about to adopt. So in its original form, the committee recommendations, it was changing the enforced dates to different dates. So that, that proposition is still on the table, and it would, it will just, the new dates would be when this regime that Counsel has adopted by virtue of adopting Counselor Perks' motion. So I think the best way to say this, Madam Speaker, is that this is a motion which that changes the, that changes the dates in which the various provisions come into force. They were all going to come into.
I can live with that, Speaker.
Okay, we're just spending a lot of time on this now. Counselor Thompson?
I was just saying that I can, I concur, I can live with that, I'm good. I just wanted to come, the confirmation of the dates. I'm good now. Thank you, Mr. Elbridge.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on it then? Okay, so for the public, once the vote is taken and the meeting is over, the clerk will post the information for the public to have a better understanding of what we voted on and the timeline on the implementation. Yeah, okay, so let's put it on the screen and let's, let's vote. Okay, the motion's on the screen. Recorded vote, it's on the screen to vote on. So.
Okay, Madam Speaker. Speaker, part two of motion two A, as amended by the previous decision of Counsel, carries. The vote is nineteen to two.
Now, when we vote on the item, Counselor Holliday, you asked for, oh, we have two more motions? Okay, Matlow, two B. On favor, show of hands, carried. Okay, Counselor Holliday's motion. On favor, show of hands, carried. Okay, item is amended, on favor, carried. Okay, we're finished that item. Do we have any quick releases before we go to the next item? Counselor Bradford? Well, I think that's from before. Anybody has any, does anybody want to release, want to remind everyone, we have to finish by three thirty today? All right.
We'll have a quick release very shortly, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Next item is PH nineteen point eleven, emergency housing action. Counselor Bylaw, questions to staff? It's here without a recommendation.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I do have questions to staff.
Okay, okay. Can you put your name on the list, please, Anna? Sorry, Counselor Bylaw? Okay, thank you. So questions to staff?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are the units that you're talking about in here on top of the winter housing plan that we approved last month?
Through the speaker to you, Deputy Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so last month we approved four hundred extra shelter spaces, two hundred and twenty supportive housing. This report identifies a hundred and fifty units that could be implemented immediately because we have supports, correct?
Yes, through the speaker, that's correct.
And there's another four hundred and fifty that you've identified that we have the capital funding, is that correct?
Through the speaker, so on the capital side for those four hundred and fifty, those are for TCHC properties, so they require minimal capital investment. And we have for the operating funding, a hundred and fifty, operating, enough for a hundred and fifty of those to become supportive housing in the short term. We need additional operating to make the remaining of them fully supportive housing.
But for the, but for the six hundred and twenty that you're asking us here, you're also asking for forty seven million to do further acquisitions. So some of the, some of what you're proposing here is further acquisitions, correct?
Yes, that is, is correct, yes. Our aim is to set up a pipeline of supportive housing opportunities that we can bring forward, accelerate quickly, subject to receiving supportive housing dollars from other levels of government.
So, and you're, you're saying that these acquisitions and these units could be done between eight to twelve weeks if we had the supportive dollars from the other orders of government? Other ways, we have a hundred and fifty, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We identified a potential for an additional five hundred and ten units beyond the hundred and fifty if we had twelve point two four million dollars in operating. And we have a further five hundred and eighty eight units coming forward next year, which needs four, fourteen million dollars annual operating in order to become fully supportive. So we basically have a vastly increased pipeline of supportive housing, more than we had this year, the two hundred and twenty. We just need, our biggest constraint is the operating dollar.
So in your report, you mentioned that we actually have over twelve hundred units that we have capital for, plus the two hundred and twenty that was already in the winter plan, so fifteen hundred units, but what you're really, the issue here is the supports.
That's right. The, the units that we've opened this year, so Church Street and also the modular housing, we haven't, we have secured supportive housing dollars for those units. We also, for next year, have sufficient support dollars for a hundred and fifty. It's really the balance of that. So like I said, we've, we've worked really hard as a staff team to identify capital opportunities for purchase, for acquisition, conversions, for more modular sites. What we are lacking is the support dollars to make that housing appropriate for those people who are living in shelters and out on the street with complex health needs.
Okay, but we also have to move quickly. So you are saying that you do have some of these acquisitions that are coming fast? And is also the, the other five hundred and thirty units on, on the RHI program was a prerequisite of the program that all units have to be delivered in 2021 as well? So these are, you've identified quick projects?
For the RHI, yes, it was a one-year, one-year delivery from the point of approval, but no later than the thirty first of December, 2021. And following the request from Planning and Housing Committee, we went back to look at those units, plus other units we had under consideration, to see if we could further accelerate any of that investment to respond even more quickly than that one-year timeline, hence why we're identifying a number of potential opportunities that could be delivered within an eight to twelve-week period.
And you started negotiations on these, on these properties? Are you talking to property owners? I mean, how are the negotiations? Are some of them close to purchase and sale?
The discussions with the property owners are going well. We haven't fired the light, we're still in a negotiation and also a due diligence. But we're, we're confident that we can reach agreements with all of those, with the owners of those properties.
Okay, thank you. That was your last question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Menemong, questions?
Yes, thanks. Recommendation number fourteen references five properties. Why is there a specific recommendation for these five properties?
Let me just have a look at number fourteen. So it's really about ensuring that we have the necessary approvals and authorities to complete the purchases for those five, that we can basically enter below-market or nominal rent leases for three years with any of the nonprofits who we may want to operate those buildings.
But you're entering into more agreements than just five. Why, why did you separate these out?
The five, the five were identified because they relate to the supply that we think we could bring forward within that eight to twelve-week period. For the remaining properties that we have funded under RHI, which have to be complete by the end of the year, we actually have more time to go through a full and competitive procurement process with the nonprofit sector for those units. But, but if we are able to secure the operating funding as quickly as we would like, and actually open those units within that eight to twelve-week period, we, we do not have the time to go to full, go through a full procurement process with the nonprofit sector for operations.
And is it true, if you enter into any agreements that are more than ten million dollars in value, that you have to come to Counsel for specific approval?
Through the speaker, on the RHI report that we brought last month, we did get some additional approvals with regard to that, and I would also let Patmatosa speak to the approvals in relation to the purchase of those sites.
Through Madam Speaker, that, that is correct, Abby. So we do have delegated authority from last month's report to transact specifically on, on RHI units, sorry, on, on facilities for the RHI program, that we'll also bring back to Counsel once the, once the transactions are complete. As we only have a year to actually do the actual acquisition and completion of any construction, our timelines are very tight.
These agreements that we're entering into, especially for the purchases of property, once the funding runs up and the pandemic ends and the funding runs up from the other levels of government, we'll still have these properties, but there'll be no operating funding assigned to it. Is, is that, do I have that right?
So the, the new kinds of money available from the federal government enable us to do what we wanted to do for a long time, which is bring forward supportive housing that's fully funded. So we are able to complete purchases of buildings and have those owned by us and put out on long-term leases to the nonprofit sector. In all cases for supportive housing, ongoing operating funding is required, and very often provincial and federal governments don't provide us with very long-term funding frameworks for operating. And right now, it's been offered in very, very short time chunks, kind of six months, three, six months maximum of a year. Ideally, we would be receiving confirmation of operating in at least a three to five-year window to give certainty and predictability to our nonprofit partners, who can then plan their staffing component, their training, and everything that's required to run these buildings really well. So we would much rather.
Sorry, short form to my answer then is no. You don't have the funding over a long-term basis, and once the funding runs up from the other levels of government, it's in fact unstable funding.
It is currently unpredictable. We do currently have sufficient for a hundred and fifty.
And what's the, what's your projected shortfall if that funding doesn't come through?
So in the report, we've identified that we can move ahead on the hundred and fifty right now. In order to move forward on the balance of the five hundred and ten, we need an additional twelve point two four million in operating funding. And then for the remaining RHI properties that are due to come forward in 2021, we need, in 2021, we need three point three million in operating funding, and then for every year after that, that would require fourteen million.
Total fourteen million for the whole month?
That, that was your last question.
The total for twelve hundred and forty eight unit is around thirty million dollars per year in annual.
Thirty.
Thirty million, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Holliday?
Thank you, Speaker. So the report includes a number of delegated authorities. Number six is to go and acquire or lease property with a cap of fifteen million per. Then there's some more delegated authority to go in sole source or non-competitive procure in number eleven, number thirteen. Can you tell me more about the properties? It sounds like it's a highly developed list, just listening to the questions. I've had this report for, I don't know, twenty-four hours here, and there's no appendix or attachment, you know, where are these properties?
So we did a lot of work as staff to prepare the RHI submission that went in at the end of November, and in going and planning for the two hundred and three million dollars that we had been allocated by the federal government. And we identified through that process many sites for new modular housing and also many sites for potential acquisition. Some of those sites were not eligible to be submitted under RHI, or we chose not to at that time. So when we were asked to kind of further expedite housing as, as a result of the pressures that we're experiencing right now, we looked again at the work that we had done to see if there were any further opportunities that we might bring forward and spend the money that we had already allocated, the forty seven million that was already a pivot from shelter funding over to housing. And so we've started that process of exploring those properties, the acquisitions and conversions with owners, and we're going through a due diligence and negotiation process, but we're not ready for those properties to become public because we haven't completed the discussions with, with owners.
Who knows where they are? The staff?
The staff are working on the sites. We have staff in CreateTO and also CRAM and Legal and Finance, all of the relevant departments of the city. And we're also engaging with counselors and their. And we're also engaging with councillors and their offices when appropriate as we get closer to reaching a deal on those properties.
So some councillors know where they are?
We've been working with, as we're able to kind of gain more certainty on some of those properties on RHI, we have been engaging councillors who are...
Well, that's a yes. Okay. And now are any of these developments, so I understand there's a difference between buying a condo unit, you know, or whatever some existing piece of housing stock, but are any of these development sites, like places that have no building and there's a move to build something there that wasn't there before?
For the expedited housing that we've identified in the eight-to-12-week period, no, that's not the case.
Right, of course. No, no, but I'm talking about the stuff that we're delegating you for, right? There's all kinds, it looks like we're delegating you up to $15 million a property. And if I've got the recommendations, I understand them correctly, and we're giving you delegation to go into non-competitively procure construction. Where, what types of projects are these? You understand, we're giving you a blank check. I need to understand what you're asking for.
If I can, Counselor Holliday, it's Pat Matoso. Through Madam Speaker, the majority of sites are existing locations. The ones that would be ground up simply modular, and as you know, we're just about to complete two modular projects, and we've done it in a six-to-eight-month time. So all from perspective, it's the sites that we are looking at and working on are sites that we can convert within a year. And the sites that were selected for modular are sites that we know we can complete in 2021.
So basically, it's a repeat of, at least the modular components are a repeat of what we've seen this year, where it's rapidly built within months as opposed to years. And, you know, we've had this discussion before. Is there anything else planned? Are there any buildings, notable developments, things that, you know, would normally go through a planning process on this list?
Not specific to this program, no, other than the modular.
Okay. So how much of this are we talking about that is modular versus things that already exist? And of the things that already exist, how many of them are things like, you know, motels that you want to convert, some other shape or form that's going to change your use?
Last, that was your last question.
So of the 1,200 units, should we be able to move forward on all of them? There are about 400, sorry, about 500 of them are modular sites, and the remaining are acquisitions and conversions largely of hotels and motels and buildings that can be converted into residential.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for such a quick turnaround, being asked for this report, and all of those who worked with you to provide this. The two things I want to ask you about, one, is how critical is it to have support dollars in order to achieve these? Can we simply have locations and no support dollars to move people into units?
There is much experience across Canada of how successful housing first and supportive housing models are to house people without a home who are experiencing homelessness. All of that requires a couple of things, actually requires a home for them to move into, and it requires the support dollars and the staffing necessary to connect them to health, health supports, and also other types of housing support. So both of those things are essential. And we have focused on trying to create a pipeline of actual homes that could be opened within a short time period. And we are unable to fully utilize that list of properties unless we're able to further secure support dollars from the other levels of government.
I'd just add, Counselor Fletcher, Ms. Mary Ann, I'll just add on to what Abby has said. We are focusing on trying to move people who have been using the shelter system as housing into housing as it's more effective for them and certainly more efficient for us. And so those supports are critical.
Thank you. So really, we're doing our part in finding the locations, and now we are looking for the other levels of government, particularly this must be the province, because we're looking for support. But their federal dollars will take those too. So we have to match up and march together in order to accomplish this. That's what I'm understanding this says. I'm very interested in number two, that the city manager established a housing and homeless action table with ministry, long-term care, children, many different community groups. I just wonder how realistic that is. Has that happened before? I don't know if the city manager's on the line, or Ms. Bond, you just want to answer that one.
So again, through the speaker, I mean, certainly...
Oh, there he is. Hi. Good morning.
We're familiar with the partners that are suggested on the roundtable. And I know you'll recall that there's been some good work evolving with University Health Network, who we've reached out to, who I think is going to be a very important partner, not just in terms of the work itself, but efforts to engage the province and maybe federal government and funding. You know, this model that we're talking about, having a direct connection to the hospital system, is important. And I can speak from my own experience as a former housing director and CEO of a housing association. The wraparound services to help people who have a whole array of challenges is so critical. And to not have it in place is a real problem. And so hence why this model is not just about the bricks and mortar, it is about those support services. And who is providing them is going to really matter.
So this approach to bring this table together, have we tried that before in order to, with a hospital component and a LYNs component, in order to truly get the commitment for the support that's necessary in order to open this? Are you confident that they'll come together, or are we just a pipe dream for us?
I can't speak to the past, as you know, in terms of what efforts have been made in this regard. So Julie may want to say something. But I think, you know, it really begs the question, what is the alternative? You know, we don't have the whole array of services that are necessary for dealing with, you know, very complex human issues. These other institutions, be it not-for-profit or hospital institutions, have those abilities. So I think it's the right approach going forward. And I think, you know, this kind of collaboration will send an important message to our provincial and federal partners in terms of, you know, how to do it is now the will to financially support doing it.
How quickly could you put that up?
Counselor Fletcher, sorry, that was your last question. Thank you.
I think he wants to answer that question, Speaker, about how fast this could happen.
Counselor Carroll? Counselor Carroll?
Sorry, I thought we were going to hear the answer first. Okay.
Well, through the speaker, if I can, just to finish off that last important question. I mean, the proposal, I mean, as soon as we get direction, I mean, there are already linkages to these groups. I mean, Julie can certainly attest to that. I think having this table and knowing how quickly the timeline that we have in front of us is, you know, we're, I think, pulling it together and getting it to focus and start to organize the services, but more importantly, send a message to the province about service support dollars, I think. It's the right group. It has to come together as quick as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to the city manager and Counselor Fletcher, I thought that you had finished your answer. Sorry about that. Counselor Carroll, question?
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I'm wondering if I could just continue that line of questioning that Deputy Mayor Minin Wong had to Ms. Bond. Maybe we can finish it to the comfort level. So the operating dollars is the key piece. We end up, if we achieve all of this, we end up with a total $30 million operating burden. I'm wondering if though, if we can look at this, we're doing this now, wouldn't you agree? We're meeting needs now that are part of the pandemic impact and all the ancillary impacts to that. But we're also addressing some unmet capacity that was already in the system in trying to achieve this?
Yes, and I'll speak to the housing component. I'm sure Mary Ann will add to the pressures that she's experiencing on the shelter side. But I think the compounding pressures of an ongoing housing and homelessness crisis with a pandemic have really exacerbated the situation for us. We want to be able to return our shelter system to an emergency system and move people from it into housing, which is the right place for them to be connected to housing and health support, so that they can live their best lives as we all want to. And so that's why it's so important for us to create this supply, create this potential to layer on those supports when they become available.
Right. And if we have enough of this model, if there are people cycling through supportive housing, and the shelter system is doing what it was really designed to do, we can really only be sure of dollars. If we get a commitment, it's sort of politically tied. So we're never going to get, you will have those operating dollars for 40 years. But if we can get three-to-five-year commitments, isn't it also true that our goal is by working across the entire housing initiative and shelter and supportive housing initiatives, that our goal is, there could come a time when we don't need the supply we need right now. And if that's the case, then I think that the comfort level people would be looking for is, is it clear to our various partners, not-for-profit partners, operators, is it clear that if we evaluate an improvement over the years and we don't think we need to be involved in this, that there would be, at a certain point in time, it would be our intention not to go looking for as high a quantum of funding, but to move on to the other parts of the housing envelopes? So that $30 million operating burden needn't be infinite. It could be a number of years while we're addressing the housing crisis and trying to stabilize it.
Through the speaker to you, Counselor, in our housing plan over the next 10 years, we identified the need for 18,000 supportive housing units. We have many people on a waitlist. This is really our attempt to accelerate and try and deliver that supply sooner within that 10-year window. I think we would all welcome a time when we had sufficient housing and the right kind of housing for everyone living in our city. And so we're having to take multiple efforts, not just in relation to supportive housing, but also things like exploring a vacant homes tax, which will impact our vacancy rate, and a whole variety of different programs and policies, because we are some way away from every person in the city having the appropriate and affordable place to live.
Right, we're some way away. But the goal is invest in these things now, so that we can get to the point where we really are able to put the resources into the wisest places. And we'd be able to assure other orders of government that while we seem to be continually asking them, our goal is to appropriately house people so that the burden actually could balance out and stabilize for all orders of government.
Yes, certainly the actions, yeah, certainly our actions that we're taking across the whole continuum on housing now and other supportive housing could have the effect of giving everybody that lives and works in the city a place, a home that they can hold on to and make their lives here. The issue for us around supportive housing is that it is a critical investment to do as early as possible because of all of the other impacts we're seeing about us not taking action. So that's why we're bringing this forward and saying, look, we think we can, and I think this is what hopefully is attractive to the other levels of government in coming to that table to talk about support dollars, is because we're saying, look, we have the potential to create 1,200 homes next year. All we need, that's the greatest amount of supportive housing we have created in a long time. What we need from you is to partner with us around the operating dollars. And if we can do that, we will collectively save ourselves millions of dollars in emergency responses through like emergency rooms, repeat offending, a whole variety of things will be impacted by our ability to provide housing, supportive housing for people.
Thank you. That was your last question.
Good, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Layton?
Thank you very much. Most of my questions are to the General Manager of Shelter Support and Housing. And first, I'll just say, Ms. Bedard, thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing and the remarkable amount of additional spaces you've been able to identify through this past 10 months. I want to get a better understanding of that, if I could. How many people have been rehoused since March?
Through the chair, we have found new housing for just over 2,000, sorry, just under 3,000 people since the beginning of the pandemic.
And how much of that is in new shelter space? And how much of that is in TCHC? And how much of that is in hotels?
So that number that I just said is all in housing. Those are people that we've been able to move into permanent housing as a result of very aggressively doing rapid rehousing.
So how many, then how many hotel rooms are we currently occupying as part of our shelter system?
We have about, let me see, we have 2,400 people who are staying in hotel rooms right now as a part of our COVID response.
And how many are in additional shelter capacity? Or is it still, sorry?
Last night, we had 3,231 people in the base shelter system, 297 in our respite programs, and 2,493 in our COVID programs. So we sheltered a total of 6,021 people last night.
Thank you. Do we know how many people are still not in housing or in our shelter system? How many people are sleeping rough currently?
We have an estimate. We have two ways of doing that, Counselor. We do a street needs assessment every couple of years. Our last street assessment said that we had about 530 people staying outside. Our Streets to Homes teams and partner agencies are also on the road 24/7, connecting to people in encampments. They're currently monitoring 80 encampments, and within those 80 encampments, there are about 410.
Thank you. Do we have enough, switching gears a little bit, do we have any idea how many vacant hotel rooms exist in the city of Toronto at any given time? Do you have any measure of that? How many additional vacant hotel rooms there are?
I don't know. I don't know whether my colleague, Pat Matoso, has a sense. He knows who we've tried to talk to.
Through you, Madam Speaker, to Counselor Layton, no, we don't have a sense of how many vacant rooms in hotels there are.
And when you're negotiating sites, like additional hotel capacity, are the owners being open-minded? Are they coming to the table? Why is it that we might have so many hotel rooms sitting vacant that we're not using to try to house the 530, 600 people that are currently not in housing?
Early on, when we started in March, when we started, you know, the COVID pandemic program to assist SSHA in finding hotels, we identified a sufficient number at that point. But as time has elapsed, it's becoming very much more difficult. And to be blunt, they're just refusing to lease hotels to us.
So we have hotel owners with buildings sitting empty or with fairly low occupancy that are refusing to negotiate leases with the city of Toronto?
That is correct. And I think a lot of it stems from, you know, the uncertainty as to when they'll be able to reopen. So I think that that's a big driver as to why they won't lease to the city, because they're waiting to see when, you know, the province will reopen. I think that's a big contributor as to why they're not leasing to us. I think that's a big contributor as to why they're not leasing to us.
Why don't we compel? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Abby. No, please.
Through the speaker to you, councillor, I just wanted to add that the challenges that we have faced with leasing have not necessarily been replicated when we've approached people for purchase. So the shift to housing here and these units that we've explored are really for us acquiring and converting, and we've had a lot more success there.
So let me ask one more question. Why can't we compel them to lease these rooms if people's lives are on the line? Why can't we compel them?
Councillor Leighton, that was your last question.
That may be the question for the solicitor, councillor Leighton.
Go ahead, Wendy. The city does have an expropriation power. It's, the process for expropriation is dictated by provincial legislation, and the process does require that the city take a variety of prescribed steps. And it would take, generally speaking, it takes 12 to 18 months to go through those steps. So it's not an emergency power. Other levels of government do have emergency property acquisition powers, but municipalities do not.
Thank you. Okay, Councillor Baillot to speak. You held the item down and go to speakers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As we've heard from staff, the city of Toronto has really taken extraordinary actions during the pandemic.
Do you have a motion, councillor?
I do. I'm moving, I'm moving staff report. And through the pandemic, we've created 2,300 spaces in new temporary shelter and hotel programs for physical distance. The winter plan that we just approved last month will bring another 620 spaces. That's from December to February, we have staff commitments and the approval of this council to bring these units in three months and to provide some housing and some extra shelter capacity. So today I move this staff report, which I have to show my deepest gratitude to staff. This was a report that was asked last week at Planning and Housing. In about a week, staff really came together to work on a path forward. What they were asked is, how can we expedite even further housing over the next eight weeks? And we know that the solution is housing. We have committed to doing that shift when we approach the other orders of government with our 3,000 spaces, 1,000 modular, 1,000 acquisitions, and 1,000 housing allowances. They've started to work with us. The rapid housing approach is a result of that advocacy that we have been doing. So what we have here in front of us is a realistic, pragmatic, attainable plan to, in the next eight to 12 weeks, to bring another 660 units and be able to house people that are experiencing homeless right now, creating more capacity also in our shelter systems. Madam Speaker, this will be done through acquisitions. This will be done with a plan that we have on the capital side that is funded, on top of a funded plan for 150 units of modular still coming this year in 2021, 538 units for right-to-housing with $203 million that came from the federal government. And we still are waiting for our project stream where we submitted another potential 500 units to be done. So in 2021, we will for sure have over 1,500 units of supportive housing, maybe even more as we hear until the end of the month from the project stream on the right-to-housing. What staff have clearly demonstrated here, and as we all know from, you know, different shelters and supportive housing that have, you know, not gone the way that we want it. And, you know, Rowanton is an example, the Vaughan is an example. We know that support services are essential for the success of these families and for the success of communities welcoming in this, in these housing, this kind of housing in the communities. What we're asking here is for a strong endorsement of this plan so that we can continue to work with our partners in the province and the federal government by asking them $48 million that is requesting in supportive services for, in order to bring almost 2,000 units of supportive housing, 660 of them in the next eight to 12 weeks, having immediate impact, bringing people inside, and having supportive, permanent housing for them, which we all know this is the solution. We reiterate our ask for 1,000 housing allowances, and we do ask for some changes in the rapid rehousing program, which we know there's a phase two coming. Madam Speaker, I think that the staff was very clear in creating a path forward. I ask my colleagues to support this report. We need to ask and continue to work the other orders of government in a cooperative way to deliver housing, and in particular supportive housing, to the people and the city of Toronto. I think that you all agree with me that we need to be focused, we need to be practical, and support our staff on what they're asking us. And right now, they are asking us to support, I think, a path that will show 660 units between eight and 12 weeks.
Thank you. We do have a question for you, Councillor Holiday. Three minutes, clarification of the motion.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. Recommendation number six recommends delegated authority to staff to go and acquire property. Are you aware of any of the property locations that staff are looking at?
I'm not aware of all the locations. I'm aware of at least one location.
Can you share that with council?
I would prefer not to because there is business implications as they're negotiating with the owner.
Okay.
As you can imagine, as any business transaction. I believe that staff have contacted local councillors. The reason I know about one property is because...
Who else knows about them on council?
I'm not sure, councillor.
You mentioned that staff had contacted local councillors.
That's what I heard them responding to you, right? On your questioning, that's what I believe they told you.
Okay. How about another, another part here talks about delegating staff to go and acquire non-competitive agreements for construction and so on. Are you knowledgeable of any negotiations or work or consideration of any of the contracts?
No, no, councillor. I think what staff were asked was, how can we ensure, keeping on our approach, that we need to invest in supportive housing instead of just investing in shelters and investing in hotels, which is a lot more expensive? I don't know if you recall that, you know, right now it's about $6,000 a month to have somebody in a shelter versus 2,400 in supportive housing. What we're saying is, this is the investment that needs to be done because at the end of the day, it's actually more economic. So what tools do you need to make sure that we're housing and creating supportive housing as fast as possible?
So who on council knows, who on council knows any of the information that is being delegated here? So properties or non-competitive agreements with entities to do construction? Does anybody have any knowledge that you know of, of any of this stuff?
I believe that staff have the knowledge on the properties and with the contracts, you're delegating that authority, councillor. I don't have the knowledge of what work will be needed in these properties. But what I do know is that this is a path forward to create the much-needed supportive housing, which is a lot more economical than keeping, and humane than keeping people in shelters or out in, on the street.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a motion. I move that City Council direct the Executive Director of the Housing Secretariat in consultation with appropriate staff to continue seeking, to seek vacant hotel and apartment units until every person in Toronto in need of accommodation has been offered housing. And two, City Council requests the federal and provincial governments to provide the city of Toronto with the necessary tools to offer housing to every person in need of accommodation, including the expropriation of vacant hotel and apartment units under the authority of Section 3.1(c) of the Federal Emergencies Act, funding for the necessary social supports for housing Torontonians, funding to acquire and/or lease the necessary units, and approvals or funding for necessary harm reduction measures. Speaker, everyone on this council, everyone in Toronto believes that every human being needs a home to live with in dignity. They need safe and secure housing. There's not one of us who doesn't believe that. The question is, are we doing enough to achieve that? Before I get to that, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible work that has been done by Toronto City staff. The number of people that we have housed this year and the current report proposes to house is truly remarkable. And I want to acknowledge also the role that Mayor John Tory and Deputy Mayor Anna Baillot have played in achieving it. Everyone at the city of Toronto has stepped up and done remarkable work. But the fact of the matter is, this report shows that it's not enough, that the desire that every Torontonian has, that all of our sisters, brothers, neighbors, friends, family have access to safe, secure housing, has not been achieved by this report. And it's because we don't have the tools. Let's take a moment and reflect on some things that were said in answers to questions asked by Councillor Leighton. Right now, 3,200 people are staying in shelters in the city of Toronto. 300 people are staying in respite care, and 500 people are sleeping on the streets. That's 4,000, that's 4,000 Torontonians. The report you have in front of you says that by the end of March, we can provide housing for 500 households, and that by the end of next December, we can provide housing for 1,250 households. In other words, the plan that we're about to approve will leave 2,500 households facing another winter, having to choose between living in a shelter or living in a tent. It's not enough. It is absolutely not enough. Now, a couple of arguments have been made about why we shouldn't do this. The first is that we can't expropriate quickly enough. Let's be clear how that would work. Today, city staff are aware of over 1,000 hotel units, I know that much, that are vacant. I've made them aware of a building in my ward where there are between 150 and 200 rental units that are vacant. Together, we could come up with enough to house everybody. We could submit that list to the federal government in days. The Premier of Ontario, the way the legislation works, would need to say that he concurs with the idea of the federal government using their emergency powers. He could write that letter today. The federal cabinet, the federal legislature does not need to meet, this is a cabinet decision. They could meet next week, launch the emergency powers, and pass the necessary regulations to begin expropriation or temporary use proceedings for the properties that are necessary. By the beginning of January, we could be beginning to do the work to get the supports in place, because we would need the premier and the prime minister to listen to our demands on supports as well. We could be housing people by the end of this winter. By the end of this winter, we could be achieving what all of us have voted for, which is the simple, humane acknowledgement that housing is a human right that every person in our city should enjoy. I have a lot more to say on this, but I see I'm running out of time. I thank you for your consideration. This is one of the most important decisions we will make collectively as a council during our term of office.
Thank you.
Please support my mark.
Thank you, Councillor Perks. We do have a question for you. Councillor Ainslie, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Councillor Perks, could you clarify or explain, elaborate a bit about the second part where you talk about asking the federal government for powers to expropriate? My understanding was we've...
I'm sorry, councillor, you've cut out.
We've received... Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yeah.
Now, okay.
Oh, now I can't. Speaker, I'm in your hands. I don't know what to do.
Ainslie, can you turn your video off?
Can you hear me now, Councillor Perks?
Yes.
Yes.
So can you clarify the second part of your motion about expropriation? I understand we're getting a, what I'll call a substantial amount of money from the federal government for housing, and the other largest city in Canada, Vancouver, is also not going down the expropriation route. They're looking, getting loans or grants for housing from the federal government. So I'm a little concerned if that's what Vancouver is doing and that's what we've been doing to date, that the federal government wouldn't agree to expropriation powers for Toronto.
Well, first, just to be clear about the process, I'm not asking the federal government to give us the power to expropriate. I'm asking them to employ their power. They have the ability under the Emergency Act to move to, for the requisition, use, or disposition of any property to assist in dealing with the emergency. The reason why I want to go that way is very simple. The report you have in front of you says that even if we do everything that is laid out within the city's powers today, we will have upwards of 3,000 people still living in shelter or on the streets by the end of this winter, and we will have upwards of 2,500 people still living in shelters or on the streets by the, at the beginning of next winter. As to whether the federal or provincial government will do this, let's be very, very clear. Just yesterday, Mayor Tory gave a remarkable speech on an issue that was in front of us and talked about over time how his position had evolved. It's not the first time he's done it. It's one of the things I admire about the mayor. In moments, he will reflect and change on his opinion. You can't get the federal government or the provincial government to change their opinion on this if you don't ask for it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Question for the mover, Councillor Pasternak.
Well, can you put your name up, please?
I'm sorry, I'm locked out or, I'm just having trouble at the moment, but just very quickly.
Okay, count, count, well, I need your name on the list.
We'll put a name on it.
Just, just one sec. Okay, hold on. We put it on the list. Three, three minutes clarification of the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Councillor Perks, I've just, I've been looking everywhere for any kind of legal precedent in this country where a body of government has expropriated individual hotel rooms. I'm just wondering whether you found something that I couldn't.
I'm not certain. I haven't checked. I know that there have been moments of emergency when the federal government has used emergency powers. It was different legislation. This legislation came into effect in 1998, I believe, or '88. So you would have to go back to previous laws that they had before this one. And I know for a fact that they have expropriated property, for example, during World War II. So it is very clear. Further, the general expropriation powers that even the city has or the province has, not the emergency ones, I'm aware of an example in my ward right now where Metrolinks is expropriating the parking garage of an apartment building in order to build pedestrian access between the UP Express and the Dundas West subway station. So expropriation is a very, I won't say common, but it's used often enough that we understand how it works.
I guess my other question is, sometimes... I guess my other question is, sometimes, these are emergency rapid response ideas that you're putting forward.
Yes.
Expropriation can be, can be a messy, legal, court-based, drawn-out process. I fail to see how your motion is going to expedite helping the homeless.
Well, allow me to explain then. There are the general expropriation powers, which you're familiar with, that are messy. And as the mayor described, I think it was two days ago, it can take 12 months to 18 months to accomplish. That's why there's a separate piece of legislation, which is the Federal Emergencies Act, that allows governments in moments of crisis to move faster. And you literally, the federal cabinet, with the concurrence of the province of Ontario, said, "We think it's an emergency that people are having to choose between going into a congregate setting, and they're afraid because they're having outbreaks of catching COVID, or sleeping outside in sub-zero temperatures and risking freezing to death, or, as we've seen, catching fire." That that's an emergency of sufficient magnitude to say to people in a society as wealthy as ours that if you are sitting on vacant hotel or apartment building units while people are dying on our streets, we are going to put them to use as housing. It can happen in a matter of days. Now, I know it's longer than that because we would need to do some work to condition the units and train staff or hire staff to provide supports. And I absolutely take the point on supports. But the legislative framework is there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Holliday to speak.
Madam Speaker, I'll be really brief. I'm actually going to support the majority of the report. I am, I'm going to ask for a separated vote on the delegation of authority to go and procure the properties. And I'm going to ask for a separated vote on the non-competitive elements. There are two of them. And the reason I say is this, and I, perhaps my questioning of the mover and others was a little strong. And I, you know, if I regret that I sounded aggressive on that. But I just, I wanted to make the point, though, that this is a very, very difficult report to digest. It is brought to us in a very, very short span of time. It came yesterday. It is talking about multiple millions of dollars and is talking about physical changes in the city. I feel very strongly to make an informed decision. I'd like to see these pieces through the stages. I would prefer to approve the acquisition of the properties through the due course, right? It goes through the General Government Licensing Committee. We look at them, figure them out, and away they go. And with respect to non-competitive procurements, right? This is an interesting public policy question before council. How urgent is urgent? What drives, when you need to run out there and do a non-competitive procurement? I know some members of council say it's an emergency out there. You know, it's a COVID emergency, there's a homeless emergency, on and on and on and on. But I think there is some judgment to be applied as to how quick an emergency is and what the public policy and the public benefit cost is on that. My preference is to slow this down a little bit, a little bit, and go through some of the process that we need to go through. And so that's why I'm going to ask for a separated vote on those particular items. I don't, I don't say that I have a lack of confidence in staff in them doing good work, the right work, the analytics. But I think as a member of council, to do an informed vote, I need a little more time and information on this, more than 24 hours. And I really would like to know what the properties are. Because from my questions, I understand that they've put a lot of effort into this. And it would, it would be helpful to know what it is that we're authorizing them to go and get. Not to say that they may not be good choices and not to say that I wouldn't be entirely satisfied if I knew all the answers. So maybe it's a, it's maybe a process issue that I wish to raise, Madam Speaker. But I, you know, I thank you and members of council for listening. And I, you know, I hope we can do this a little bit better the next time these type of ideas come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Layton to speak.
How urgent is urgent? I want you to just reflect on that statement from the last speaker just for a moment. How urgent is urgent? We heard from city staff that we have 3,000 people in shelters last night, 300 people in respite, and 500 feel safe enough to go indoors because of the emergency that we're under. You know, we go out there every day and tell people to stay home. Well, 4,000 people don't have a home to go to. And they're sleeping in cots on floors. They're sleeping in congregate settings and shelters, or they're sleeping in tents on the street. And maybe some councillors don't see the urgency as much as others who are responding to requests, responding to, to pleas, responding to cries for help from the individuals that are experiencing, experiencing this epidemic in a far, in a far more serious way than others in our city. How urgent is urgent? Well, it was urgent enough that, that our city staff went out and with Herculean effort were able to rehouse 3,000 people. But the problem of homelessness in this city has been growing exponentially through this, through this epidemic. And it's highlighted, I think, the building for decades. You know, every government has some blame. They can be placed on them for this. But let's not take this time to point fingers. Let's acknowledge that we need to collectively, in every level of government, take every step that is possible in order for us to ensure that there's a roof over everyone's head this winter, that we're respecting people's concerns about congregate settings. And instead of going the traditional route of opening up the armories and opening up respite sites, that we're finding people safe places, not only from the cold, but also from COVID. Now, we heard that the city has gone out and has tried to negotiate leases with vacant hotels, 1,000 rooms sitting empty. But we have been, at least 1,000 rooms sitting empty. But we haven't been able to do so because they won't lease them to us. And we don't have the power to act quickly enough to ensure that we fill those vacant rooms with, with people, that we give people a chance through this. Our staff, again, have, have taken enormous steps in the mayor and councillor Bylaw. But we don't have that tool that the federal government has to actually go in and say, "It's urgent." How urgent? Urgent. How much of emergency? An emergency that could see hundreds of people die if we don't start to address this of, of the lack within our system, right? Okay. Councillor Perks is a pathway to that. And despite their Herculean efforts, I've put together a plan. But as it's, as we've heard, it's not enough and it's not fast enough. And we need more tools in our toolbox. So I'd, I'd ask you all to consider supporting councillor Perks' motion in order for us to explore every tool possible to help us through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, members, I would, I wanted to get this item done before lunch. Councillor Carroll, you have your name up to speak.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you know, I listened very carefully to councillor Perks' motion because I'd heard it was coming and I thought, what an extreme thing. And, and here it arrives and there's nothing extreme about it. It asks staff to keep seeking accommodation until we've housed all of those who aren't housed. It asks other orders of government to use special powers that they have to help us do that. How, how in heaven's name would you not want to take that position? That's all it's saying. We don't know what the outcome of it will be. But why wouldn't you want to take that position? You know, earlier in the council session, Madam Speaker, we had a, we had a motion come before us that very quickly put the divide between downtown and the suburbs in sharp relief. So much so that the motion ended up being withdrawn. Because that's a, that's a thing that exists between us. But on this, there is no divide. There are people dying in drug-related overdoses in an emergency shelter in my ward, north of the 401. There are people sleeping by the Don River in my ward, north of the 401. And I don't for one second believe that that's not happening on the Humber River as well. This is now an issue for all of us. And people are literally dying because we didn't meet this need before this pandemic. And so this is a position that we should all want to take, whether we can achieve it or not. Here's the good news. I honestly believe, I, I fully believe that right now, more than any other time, we have the perfect team that if we did achieve these permissions and these accommodations, we have the right staff team to actually be able to deal with that, to have the capacity to deal with it. We have the right city manager, the right head of SSHA, the right housing secretariat, we have the right team that if we had this capacity, they would use it. And all of the dollars and cents that we use over and over again to immediately address the fact that we haven't met these housing needs and we have to now throw emergency cash into the street to deal with that, those dollars start to begin to be used wisely. Instead of just throwing it in the street, respite and, and more shelter beds and more shelter beds and more shelter beds, we'd be doing the thing we need to do to properly accommodate people. And then make, changing and shifting where those people are and what their housing type is and what their own personal capacity is as part of our recovery and rebuild for the next decade. We need that. And in a city such as Toronto, why in heaven's name wouldn't a premier and a prime minister need that also and want to make it happen? Because we can stand here and say, "We honestly have the team in place that can do this for you." No one would get a black eye. Everyone would be able to say they finally did it if we set out to do it. And while I had my druthers about this motion, it came down to a simple thing that councillor Perk said in answer to one of our questions. If you don't ask, other orders of government never even contemplate it, let alone give it. Why would you not want to ask for this right now? Those are my comments, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Last speaker, Mayor Tory.
Speaker, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank our staff. You know, I think we all do agree, and there's different points of you being represented around the, I was going to say around the chamber, but around the screen, that it is not satisfactory in particular to have people living in the encampments. I think, I think we all agree on that. It is not safe. It is not healthy. It's not legal. But, but the first two are the more important of the two. And so the question then becomes, what can we do about that group of people first and foremost? Because they're people who are living outside at a time of year when we just, you know, make every effort through Streets to Homes and other things we do on an ongoing basis to try to ensure that's not the case. I do want to commend the staff. I want to commend in particular one of our colleagues, Deputy Mayor Anna Bylaw. Because they've worked hard to come up with a plan here that is meant to address this. I think it was meant to address it, I believe, consistent with the wishes not of the mayor, but the group of councillors, but the whole council basically didn't see the addition of thousands more shelter beds last year, let alone this year, as being the right answer. That we all knew that you could go on doing that, but it was not going to provide a satisfactory, longer-term answer to address this challenge that we have in front of us, which is, you know, the overall housing challenge, including homelessness, is the number one challenge that I think we heard about at the time of the last election that has been in front of us since. We've done a lot to try and address it, but clearly not enough yet. I think now the economy is rivaling that with, as an issue, but it's still the top issue. So I want to thank the staff for their enterprise. I want to thank them for their sense of urgency because this came together in the last short while. I want to thank them for the fact that they did some very, very sensible things, which I think is one of the reasons why I commend this report to you and ask you to support it, including, for example, the use of vacant TCHC units, which we discuss constantly with the TCHC because it's a real challenge for them, believe it or not, in a city that's desperately short of housing to actually make use of some of these units because people choose not to, to occupy them or to accept them sometimes when offered. I think one of the things that's been lost in all of this, as we've discussed, you know, whether councillor Perks... I'll address that in a moment, is that the essence of this report in terms of achieving more than just the initial tranche of units, the essence of what's needed here as well is operating funding from the other governments. And I guess I would come down to saying this. First of all, with respect to councillor Perks' motion, and I will support part one of it, but I will not support part two. And it isn't, I mean, I've read the Emergencies Act and you should have a look at it. And I think what you have to focus on, though, is sometimes not what the words say and the fact, yes, it's a tool that's there. Ask yourself this question. With all the discussions that's gone on during the pandemic about whether or not the federal government would ever use that to declare an emergency for other reasons related to the health pandemic, they've not done so. It's been a subject of great debate and controversy. And that's not to say that that's, anybody's decision on that is right or wrong. It says to me, though, why do we want to spend our efforts getting mired down in the use of that extraordinary power when the federal government itself has indicated a reluctance to do so? And they are reluctant to do so in part because of the reaction of the provinces. And if you read the Act, it specifically says it should only be used in the, in the absence of any other law that can deal with this and that it has to be used in concert with the province. And I'm willing to bet money that if we went down this road now as a council, we will simply get ourselves mired into a lengthy, unsatisfactory, non-productive debate about this with the federal government and with the province, both of whom will not want to see the country go down this road because it starts with a declaration of emergency that the federal government, even after all this time and all the tragedy and all the problems across the country, has not done. So are they now going to do it just, when I say just, are they going to do it solely on account of Toronto making a request in respect of what is an urgent situation here? I don't think so. So I guess what I would say, Speaker, is that I would rather see us put our efforts into approaching those governments for the money that we need to fund the supports that are needed to make this housing appropriate and supportive of the people who will enter this housing, so that we can get on with that. Because the report clearly identifies the fact that we will not be able to do even what this report contemplates without that support. And I've been trying, and others have as well, councillor, Deputy Mayor Bylaw and so on, to, to even get supportive housing funding for the modular units that people are moving into as we speak. And, and they haven't as yet delivered on that. And I think this is a real problem for us. We have a little bit of money, as the report says, that we have available to do this in the early period. But make no mistake, we will get to the stage where that money has run out. And I do not believe it is the responsibility of the city government by itself to be doing this. It just isn't. A lot of this is part, as far as I see it, is the healthcare system for people who have mental health issues and substance use issues and things like that. So I will vote against part two of councillor Perk's motion because I think it's just a wholly, it's just a wholly inappropriate request to make, given the reality of what we looked at during this pandemic and their, their reluctance and failure to use that power so far. And I'm not being critical of them. They've made their own decision about that. And the realities of how this country works, and it will just get bogged down in some endless discussion about what amounts to almost a constitutional matter as opposed to focusing on just getting the money so we can get these supportive units in place, house these people, and do it in, as the report says, a relatively short period of time, eight to 12 weeks. So those are my comments, Speaker. I do commend the report and I do thank the staff for a job extremely well done. These are as dedicated people as I've ever seen. The work they've been doing from Mary Anne to Abby to the whole team, led by Deputy Mayor Bylaw, is extraordinary. And I think that we spend so much time talking about the shortcomings. And I will acknowledge councillor Perk's compliment of them at the beginning. And I think that's good because they've done extraordinary work during this pandemic and there's more to be done. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for us to complete voting on this item before we break? And also we have...
So moved.
Also, we have two members' motions to bring forward. Okay, moved by councillor...
Madam Speaker, can I move a motion to work through lunch?
No.
Yeah, let's complete the agenda.
We're going to have a half hour break, members. So it will be a half hour lunch. Thank you. Okay, moved by councillor Holliday on favor. Carried. Okay, so we can put the motions on the screen?
Madam Speaker, on a point of order, I did wish to vote for items six, 11, and 13 separately. Those are the items that pertain to delegation authority.
Yes, we have that councillor Holliday. We have that.
Thank you.
And, Madam Speaker, just to be sure, councillor Perk's motion will also be separated?
And, Madam Speaker, just to be sure, Counselor Perks' motion will also be separated?
Yes.
That way.
Okay, if we can put the motion on the screen. Okay, Counselor, okay, Counsel- Counselor Bylaw's motion.
Part 6, 11, and 13.
Oh, 6, 11, and 13, we're doing separately.
Yeah. So we're voting on 6, 11, and 13 separately.
Madam Speaker, can I just ask a question on a procedural point of order? If I vote for this motion, does it make Counselor Perks' motion redundant?
No.
No, this is, we're voting on item 6, 11, 13 on PH 19.118.
Could I clarify, are we voting on the items that Counselor Holliday pulled out right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is on the report, and Counselor Holliday wanted a vote on item 6, 11, and 13 separately. That's what we're voting on.
Counselor Ansel, your vote, please. Thank you. Counselor Fletcher, please. Speaker, Parts 6, 11, and 13 of Motion 1 carry. The vote is 20 to 4.
Okay. Okay, so on the balance of Motion 1. Okay, on favor?
Recorded.
Recorded. Okay.
Counselor Prusa, are you present in voting? And if so, would you please turn your camera on, please, for the vote? Madam Speaker, the balance of Motion 1 carries unanimously. 24 in favor.
Okay, now we have motion by Counselor Perks. We'll vote on that separately as well. Part 1 and Part 2. Okay, on Part 1. Did you want a recorded-
Please.
Recorded vote.
Counselor Bradford, thank you. Speaker, Part 1 of Motion 2 by Counselor Perks carries. The vote is 22 to 1.
Okay, Part 2, recorded vote. Recorded vote.
Members, stand by. We'll open the voting panel in a moment.
Okay, it's on the screen, recorded vote.
Counselor Prusa, please. Part 2 of Motion 2 by Counselor Perks does not carry. The vote is 6 to 17.
The item. Okay, that's the item. So we have two members' motion we want to introduce. The first one, Counselor Pasternak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. The reason for the urgency is the fire at 6250 Bathurst Street. We need to create a working group immediately so that we can get back into, we can get tenants back into the building, we can provide all the supports they need through loss of food and clothing, and that we can come together with the various social agencies to work over the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on favor, carried. Mayor Torrey?
Yes, Speaker. I have a motion here that would authorize myself with the Chief Financial Officer to enter into an agreement to receive $776 million in transit funding that has been announced by the provincial government. And I would think we'd certainly want to take that on and sign the necessary agreements, and rush the check over to the bank and cash it immediately, because we're very much in need of that money, obviously, to offset our losses for 2020 because of the pandemic. And so this would authorize the Chief Financial Officer and myself to execute those agreements between the times of the council meetings.
Okay, on favor, carry. Okay, members, we'll come back in a half hour, which will be 10 past 1. The staff just need a small little break. So 1:10, we'll be back. Thank you.
Hi, Josie. How are you? It's all right. Okay, thanks. I'm just following up.
Your mic is on.
Okay, Members of the Council, this meeting is now resumed. We do have quorum. Do we have any quick releases?
I'm here, Madam Speaker.
Okay, would you like to move your Members' Motion 2737 for 6250 Bathurst Street?
Yes, should I explain what it is or just move it and hope it carries? I'm going to move it.
We'll put it on the screen. We introduced it just before lunch.
We did, we certainly did. And this is just creating a framework to help the residents displace from 6250 and work on a repair and rebuild plan for the building that was damaged in a fire just about 10 days ago.
Okay, thank you. The motion is on the screen. On favor, show of hands. Thank you. Mayor Tory?
Thank you.
Mayor Tory? Mayor Tory? Okay, so we'll go to our next item, which is T 21.9, 19, sorry. Inclusion on the City of Toronto's Heritage Register. Counselor, this is for Dundas Street West in Roncesvalle. Counselor Holliday, you held the item down. Do you have questions to staff?
I do not. I just wish to speak briefly.
Okay, does anybody have any questions to staff on this item? Okay, Counselor Holliday to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will be supporting the item, but I wanted to draw council's attention to something that a constituent drew to my attention. A constituent in Ward 2 is a property owner affected by this particular item. They have some roots in the community and they pointed out something concerning with the process. Now, yesterday, we voted on our Members' motions, including my support, and I think everybody's, was to take a look at the heritage process, but I wanted to offer something from the other end. On November 16th, the staff, and you can just take it as I'm holding up the letter, November 16th, the staff issued a notice to people that had properties affected by this report. My constituents sent me a copy of the letter that they got. There's the envelope. I took their name off of it because they're not involved in this conversation. It was postmarked the 18th, November 18th. And they got the letter, they told me, on Friday, November 20th. Fast forward, the instructions of this particular letter, and it's lengthy, tells you that you, if you want to make a deputation to the, sorry, you want to make a submission to the Toronto Preservation Board, you need to do that by the following Thursday, November 26th, by noon. And if you want, you can come to the Preservation Board and make a deputation. They expressed their frustration in the process, and I'm not saying anything negative about anyone involved in this. There's no reason to say that we didn't follow the rules. But I wanted to point out the process. Essentially, they were given three and a half business days if they needed to go get advice on making a submission that affected their property. Three and a half business days is not a long time to write a letter or put something into the committee that they needed to see. Now, I will grant that, of course, there are other gates in this process, but to be fair to people that are affected by it, you want to give them an ample amount of opportunity. Otherwise, why would they have confidence in the system? We've heard other comments, I'm sure, members of council on similar things, such as the Committee of Adjustment and other things that have been affected during COVID. And my constituents pointed that out. So, you know, again, I wanted to make sure that I brought this to council's attention. The other component of this is very important. I don't know if members looked at the reports. I'm assuming you did. But you will know that we put through, we processed over 960 properties. So these weren't heritage designations of one building. These were not heritage listings of one building. These were entire swaths of main streets, and every property was listed in one shot on the report to council. And again, I'm going to support this, but I wanted to bring this to council's attentions to think about it in the context is that it works both ways when we're trying to achieve the preservation of heritage properties. I think there's a balance to be found. I understand the motion, the Members' motion the other day talked about an unfortunate circumstance where a building was not preserved against the wishes of many people in the community. But on the other side, I think we've got to be fair with property owners and give them a chance to go through the process, to think about it. And, I mean, these are clear. The dates are right on the letters here. And, you know, I hope folks will think about that as they consider any revisions to the process in the future. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Perks to speak?
Thank you, Speaker. I take Counselor Holliday's point about the notification period, but there are a few other pieces of information that council should be aware of. The listing of these properties comes as the result of a planning and heritage study done for Roncesvalle over the course of several years. It included mailings to every property owner, including, I assume, the property owner he identifies. It listed in the communications that we were considering all these properties and other properties, as well as potential candidates for listing on the Heritage Register. There were, I forget how many community meetings, but the staff held several. We also did walkabouts on the street. Planners did pop-ups. And individual property owners, as I mentioned, were all informed that this was going to happen. And this place, this took place starting, I believe it is, five years ago. So there's been a five-year process, and the owners of the property were notified about that process, including the potential for heritage designation of the properties listed here. So while, yes, we have to do better about notifying people about committee meetings and the opportunity to make deputations, I don't want anyone to go away with the impression that the particular property owner that Counselor Holliday is talking about didn't know. They've known for years.
No, Madam Speaker, if I may, just on a point of privilege, I just thank Counselor Perks for adding the context. That is always fair, and I don't want to ever accuse anyone of not knowing anything. But I wanted to be very, very precise in my concerns raised to council and just the utility of my speech was to ensure that it was included in the discussion around our processes.
Thank you. So on the item? On favor? Carried. Thank you. Next item is CC 2710. Counselor Perks, you held the item down? This is Status Request to Ontario for Enhanced Income Supports and Related Measures to Address COVID?
Yes, I'm just pulling it up now. You can start my time. It's my fault I'm running a little late. Had a lot of issues here. What I'm curious about, Speaker, is, and this is something I've asked about on other occasions. We have a suite of things that we, as a council, ask the provincial government to consider. We even discussed that a couple of items ago before lunch. And we get these reports back, you know, detailing why it's important and so on. But what I don't seem to But what I don't seem to be able to read is, you know, we met with the minister and the minister said no. Or we met with the minister on three of these items and they said, well, two we can keep talking about and one's off the table. I'm wondering, when we get these reports, if it's possible to have a fuller conversation so there's more transparency, both for us as decision-makers and also for the people that we represent, about how intergovernmental conversations are going and where the province is throwing up roadblocks and where the path is clear. I'm wondering if the city manager could address that.
Okay, the city manager.
Madam Speaker, I'm not sure if Chris is on, but Sandra Rodriguez is on from our intergovernmental office, I believe.
Yes, I am. Thank you for the question, councillor, through the chair. In terms of the actions that have been adopted by council, these have been transmitted to the province, including the ones that were adopted at the last council meeting in November. We are scheduling staff-to-staff discussions to go through in more detail the requests from the city early in the new year.
So the piece I'm curious about, and please go ahead.
Sorry, I'd just augment, sorry councillor Perks. We have had discussions at the staff level as well with regard to the income support, to number the equity, the measures under the equity plan that council adopted, et cetera. That's at a staff level at the province, with the province.
Right. So here's what I want to understand better. Our council and many Torontonians have requested that there be eviction moratorium. Our council and many Torontonians have requested that there be sick pay. What I'm curious about is, in the staff-to-staff conversations or in the political conversations, how can we make Torontonians aware of the status of those conversations? Any limits the province is imposing? Any receptivity where the roadblocks are? You know, we are facing an unparalleled crisis, and Torontonians want to know, is the province of Ontario hearing us or not hearing us? How do we get that information so we can communicate it to the people we represent and which the premier also represents?
The reason I'm pausing councillor Perks is, when we deal at the province, we're dealing at a staff level, but the decisions, before any decision is final, it has to go to the minister's office. So I don't know if Sandra can augment. Normally, the discussions we have at a staff level are sort of more confidential until we get the minister's concurrence. And so I'm just struggling with how we can do that. But maybe Sandra, who's a lot more experienced sometimes with the intergovernmental protocols, can augment.
Through the chair, what I would say is that using the reports that we're bringing forward, we can, you know, we can try to include as much information in terms of the updates and the status of those discussions, councillor. As Juliana mentioned, some of these discussions at the staff-to-staff level do happen under our Toronto-Ontario consultation agreement, which binds us to confidentiality, and this is on the provincial and city side. And as Juliana also mentioned, ultimately, the decisions are made, political decisions, that then are escalated to those ministers' offices. So certainly, as council is approving these different recommendations, we are transmitting those and engaging in those discussions. But, you know, but sometimes those outcomes aren't as quick as we would like. But certainly, in the report back, we can definitely try to augment in terms of what the status of those discussions are.
Thank you, that's helpful. I'm looking, for example, at the issue raised when council debated PH 16.8, addressing housing and homeless issues. And city council recommended that we urge the province of Ontario to immediately reinstate the moratorium on eviction of tenants. Now, I've observed, because they've been posted, a number of these hearings that are taking place at the landlord tenant tribunal. And frankly, to my eye, they just look like an eviction factory.
Councillor Perks, this is your last question.
Thank you. It's been two and a half months since council asked that. If we could just be assured in writing in future that when we ask something like this and it comes back two and a half months later, we can say, we had 10 meetings between city staff and provincial staff, but no action has been taken by the cabinet. And if we could be explicit that we went and talked to them and just mailed them a letter, but we made our best case to their public service, and to date, no action has been taken by the provincial cabinet, I think that would be of value to this council and to the people we represent. Is that level of detail possible?
I believe so. We may not be able to disclose some of the information we receive at those meetings, but we should be able to tell you how many times we've met.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Juliana, did you want to say more?
No, I was just going to get Sandra to confirm if she was comfortable with that from an intergovernmental perspective.
Okay.
Thanks, Juliana. Yes, I can confirm that I'm comfortable.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions on this item? To speak, councillor Perks?
Speaker, I think the questions I raised frame the issue. We've had, a phrase that we've heard from the mayor and the city manager is that for many of these problems, we need to take a whole-of-government approach. And that means that we have to successfully conclude and conduct negotiations with the province around a variety of issues. For the, you know, for an ordinary Torontonian, there are dozens and dozens of ways that governments are interacting with their lives that are new and different, and in many circumstances they're changing. And what they don't know is who is doing what and where there are problems, who isn't doing what. We, as a council, are trying to advocate on behalf of the people we represent to get the best outcomes we can, the eviction moratorium, paid sick days thing, too, that come to mind. And as far as members of the public know, city council passed a motion and then nothing happened. And I think I want to be able to make it clear to the people that we represent that we are pursuing these vigorously. The mayor talks often about the number of people that he speaks to in a day and other orders of government, and I'm very proud he's doing that work. But I would want to make it clear as well that the public service, who answer to Toronto City Council and therefore to Torontonians, are doing their work as well. And if we're not seeing outcomes, it's because the province hasn't acted yet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, on the item, oh, councillor Pasternak to speak?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just very briefly on this subject. One thing that I have found over the years in meeting with potential candidates or existing candidates for TCH or other affordable housing is that the weak link in their income stream is on federal programs such as CPP, OIS, DIS, disability, as well as there's a weak link with veterans pensions. Not just the total amount, but many are not getting the entitlement that they're legally eligible for. And sometimes it's an error on the behalf of the federal government. Sometimes it's a lack of advocacy or following the paperwork on the part of the individual. The bottom line is, they're being short-changed in many cases for various pensions and supports that they're entitled to. And the other weak link is when it comes to international pensions agreement. We are a country of newcomers and immigrants, and they've often served in foreign armies or had some kind of other pension agreement in their home country, in their original country. And they're not aware that they're eligible for those international pensions, and we're not executing those agreements to the robust form that we should. So I realize this motion is mostly geared to the province of Ontario, and clearly, the province of Ontario has to live up to its obligations. But I just want to say that in the hundreds of people who have come to our office over the years, we make a point of looking closely at their various federal entitlements, although I don't like using that word. And if there's any weakness that we see, we do send them to the local Member of Parliament to make sure their file can be brought up, examined, and corrected. And that way, on the income side, they're getting what they need and what they're due. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on this item? Okay, on the item? On favor? Carried. Next item is Members' Motion 27.2, Stopping Residential Evictions During COVID-19. Councillor Bylaw, you held the item down. Do you have questions to staff? If you have questions to staff, can you please put your name?
Did you hear that, Madam Speaker?
No, I didn't.
I said I didn't have any questions.
Oh, does anybody have any questions to staff? No? Okay, councillor Bylaw, would you like to speak?
Madam Speaker, I can speak. As you know, the provincial government has passed another eviction moratorium. However, we're still waiting for cabinet to sign on that. As landlords at Toronto Community Housing, we have been working hard with our tenants to have payment agreements. And so what we are asking here as a shareholder is for them to continue in that vein and continue to work with our tenants and to institute this moratorium for at least three months and then to come back. And a major reason, obviously, is that we are in the middle of a pandemic. We don't want to have more people falling into homelessness. And at the end of the day, we know that for us as a city, and we support both TCHC and we support our shelter system, we know that also in terms of economics, this is the most economic way to deal with the issue. But above all, above all, I think, is the most humane way to deal with the issue in the middle of a pandemic. And if we, as a council, have asked the provincial government for this eviction moratorium, I think that us as a landlord should act accordingly.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers on this item? No? Okay. On the item? On favor? Carried. Next item is MM 2713. Councillor Fletcher?
Speaker, I'm just trying to get this, I have a question for staff, please.
Okay.
I certainly 100% support this.
Okay, just a sec councillor Fletcher, I want to make sure staff is here. Is staff on the line?
Yep.
Okay, you can go ahead now.
Here. It's Janie, I'm here. I'm not sure if others are here, but I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. 100% support for this initiative. City's always been an amazing employer of youth and from all kinds of communities. But a number of years ago, there was a requirement that everyone had to have a CPIC, and there were kids who were failing that because they'd been carded or they had a small conviction for small possession. They had certain run-ins with the law, and then they were unable to be hired. So I'm just checking if that's still the circumstance. You may recall there was two young folks that were going to work for MetroLinks, and they didn't make the CPIC, even though their records had been expunged. So I'm concerned, I'm very much in support here, but I really do need to know that there are no impediments of this kind in the city's hiring.
So through you, Madam Speaker, I mean, I can say that we do still require a criminal reference check as part of the hiring process, but we do, you know, try and work with those as we can. And if there are results that come back from those checks, they're each looked at on an individual basis and looking at the circumstances of what's going on. So there isn't a universal approach that just in case something may come up on one of those checks that you're automatically, you know, not eligible to be hired. There's, you know, a number of different criteria that we look at to see what it is that has come up. And, you know, in all fairness, there, you know, we don't have that many that come back, but certainly, they're all looked at individually and in consultation with our people in equity folks.
So how many, I guess I'm just, is that written down somewhere, this policy? Because the policy for the CPIC is very clear. We know that black youth in particular are just overrepresented in courts, small crimes, records, et cetera, that turns up. And I think that it's important that we understand what our approach is.
So through the speaker, councillor Fletcher, I'm not sure, I know Alma was trying to get on, because this is something that we coordinate through people in equity, obviously. But we can provide you with, you know, what the process is. If there's, you know, if that's helpful, I don't have it with me. I wasn't expecting this to be the question, so, but there is a whole lot of information that we have.
Hi, Janie. It's Alma, I'm on now.
Oh, there you go. It's like an angel. Hi, Alma.
You saved her, saved by Alma.
Hi, councillor. I'm happy to-
Were you listening to the questions that I was asking?
Yes, I was listening. I just wasn't at it as a speaker, so I apologize for the delay on getting on.
And my concern that with the CPIC, there were great concerns that kids would basically not be eligible for small misdemeanors or having something on their record, even including an expunged record. So I'm interested in adding this on to this item when it comes back to understand very clearly how we're approaching this.
Yes, so we will be happy to talk, to include in the report back, to describe the process, but I can confirm what Janie said, that there is like an individual-by-individual basis where we look into the record and we provide the individual an opportunity to provide some supporting information. Sometimes people have, they can talk about what they've done since then, and that we consult with legal and work with the division and with the young person, and that there have been numerous cases where employee, people have been able to be hired despite records. So we're happy to talk about that in the report back.
I'd like to know more about that. I'd also like to know more about all of our agencies, boards and commissions, Toronto Hydro, TCHC, Parking Authority, if they have the same approach. Or, as you heard, my question was about MetroLinks hiring, and two young black kids couldn't get hired because their CPIC came back, well, they wouldn't tell them what it was, but even they thought their records were expunged. So to me, this is a moment when we really need to look at this and clear this up with all our agencies and the city too.
Yeah, so just to be, just on that point, we do not, our agencies have their own HR policies. Typically, council will direct that they have policies that are consistent with the cities, but I'm not familiar with what their policies are in this respect. So if you would like us to poll them for their approach as part of the report back, we can certainly work with our colleagues and CMO to see what we can do there.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. That was your last question. Thank you. Councillor Carroll, questions?
Well, Madam Speaker, I think I heard an undertaking that there's going to be reporting back on this, because I'd be happy to wait until then. I think it's unclear to people whether you're hirable by all of these public agencies, including our own, if you have been in prison or not, that are we a second chance employer? including our own, if you have been in prison or not, that are we a second chance employer or not. But if there's a report back, I'll wait until then.
Okay. Are there any further questions on this item?
Yeah, may I ask just a-
Councillor Holliday?
Thank the councillor for raising. It's an interesting topic. I wonder if Alma could tell me a little bit about it. We're not the only organization that does background checks. I think other governments, I mean, heck, if you want to go volunteer to be an hockey coach, I think they check records and so on. You know, is there, my question is maybe, is there a community of practice out there or a body of knowledge about how to approach these issues? Like, we're not, we don't have our own special policy here. This is a, you know, part of a bigger legal question everywhere. Is that not true?
Yes, it is, and through the chair. And it also depends on the nature of the conviction, and it also depends on the nature of the job through which the person is applying. And so what we do in the city's practice is that we take a look at all of those circumstances to come up with an approach in that individual case. So there is not a categorical, if you have a record, you cannot work for the city, or if you have a record, you can work for the city. It's just we do a case-by-case analysis, which is the best practice in the circumstance.
Yeah, when I worked for the provincial government, it was around the time that they implemented some of these policies for hiring. I remember being part of the discussion on that process. Would it be fair to say that I don't think council can expect a report back, a document that has some like really clear rules, you know? If you did this, this is what happens. It's because every job is different, everyone's circumstance is different, and there is a process to examine these things and also to indicate fairness. And there's always appeals and that type of thing. Is that maybe more the type of report that we could expect back is to talk about how it works?
That is correct, that we will go through the process and how we engage the individual and how we come up with a conclusion. But you're right, every circumstance is different. It also depends on if you had a conviction and since then you've been doing community service and giving back to your community and demonstrated good behavior since, that's a whole different analysis.
And if a job involves children or working with children or vulnerable individuals or handling money, like, it's all different. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, speakers. Councillor Fletcher.
Yes, I'll move this, let go of my hold. Obviously, it's being moved by Councillors Perutz and Pasternak. Very thoughtful, important motion. North York was always a leader, the leader, in the hiring of youth from all the TCHC communities, kids of color, they were a pathway to a good job, and such an important thing. When the CPIC came in, there was a bit of a hiatus from that ability to hire. So I'm very interested to hear how we've managed to overcome that to be a premier hiring operation for kids from communities where it might be a job out of a difficult life or on your way to being a permanent city employee, mostly in the rec programs. Kids were hired. I see Councillor Pasternak nodding. He knows that that's the case we have. And so for this, I am interested. And I wasn't going to speak, and then Councillor Holliday twigged me, simply because with this policy, we have to recognize that there are some communities, some kids in particular, that have a disproportionate amount, number of charges or going to court or issues with the law because of their color of their skin. And that's part of our anti-racist program, part of our anti-poverty program. And so the weight that gets placed on the CPIC is something that I'm very interested in, and how we're using that, what discretion there is, as well for other agencies, boards and commissions. The city may well have kind of the most enlightened approach, but if we don't line up all of our agencies, boards and commissions with the city policy, then what will happen is these kids that are disproportionately involved with the law for reasons we know why, that they're at a disadvantage to be hired and to meet our goals in the anti-poverty strategy and meet our goals in overcoming anti-Black racism. So for me, this is a part and parcel of that whole piece. And that's, I'm very happy to hear Ms. Romoff and Ms. Atticant say that they will include some of these things in this report back so we can have a larger conversation at that time. And I know Councillor Carroll's interested in having that then, not now, because we don't have all the facts. So thanks very much. I just removed that.
Thank you. Councillor Perutz to speak. Councillor Perutz.
Sorry, Speaker, I forget the mute button all the time. Although you guys might enjoy the mute button, not me. But, yes, Speaker, just very, very quickly, I just want to say that the motion is before you because I believe the city has this, is, it can be such a powerful tool in bringing some equity to this issue. Not only is it very much part of our poverty reduction strategy, but, you know, but the city is, you know, hires thousands and thousands of young people yearly, and we have this massive tool at our disposal, and we should be making better use of it. The only thing I'm sad about is that the motion is coming a little late and we may miss the summer hiring window. And I understand the logistics and I understand why the date, why it's dated the way it is. But I'm hoping that staff that is listening and that will be doing that hiring will sort of preempt and use that lens as, and use the lens that's being asked for here as they begin their summer hiring now in January, February, and March, in the early months of the coming year. That's really the only thing I wanted to add to this, and I'm hoping that the colleagues will support this. It's a good initiative, it's good for us to do, and it's a win-win-win for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay.
Can I get a recorded vote, please? Thank you.
Okay, on the item, recorded vote.
Councillor Bylaw, please. Councillor Matlow, please. The item carries unanimously, 22 in favor.
Thank you. Our next item is MM 2718. It's the consideration of bridge design.
Madam Speaker, before you start, Madam Speaker, it's Councillor Carroll. If I could just wish you a very happy holiday and a happy new year. I need to step out to go to a MetroLinks meeting, speaking of MetroLinks. So I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Deputy Mayor Minin Wong-
Good words for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, is, I had questions of Michael Dandrea.
Okay.
I hope you- Is there someone to answer questions? Madam Speaker.
Is anybody here to answer the question?
Speaker, it's Josie. I'm trying to get Michael. I'm just texting him right now in case he's trying to get in. Speaker, he is on now.
Great, can you start my clock? Will you start my clock if you?
Yes, I didn't start it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to start it now. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Michael, are you there?
I'm here.
We had a chat about this earlier. These are three bridges in Hogs Hollow, right?
They are. They are.
Yes. So these bridges are pretty far along, aren't they?
Well, we've got one design assignment for the three bridges. We completed construction of one, the Donino Avenue Bridge, earlier this year. The other bridge that's under construction now is the Plimbridge Road Bridge, and we're working on the design for the Mill Street Bridge. So to your point, one completed, one underway, and another one to start later in 2021.
So we've already awarded the contract, is that fair to say?
For the Plimroad Bridge, for the Plimbridge Road Bridge, yes, we did. The contractor is underway. He, construction is well underway and expected to be completed in May of 2021.
And the other two?
Donino Avenue Bridge has been completed, completed earlier this year, and the Mill Street Bridge is under design currently, planned for construction in 2021.
So I think the motion says to go back and have a community meeting and talk about design, but horse has left the barn, so to speak, hasn't it?
Well, through the speaker, to your point, the construction is well underway. There'd be little value to go out to the community at this point. I need to emphasize that the three bridges are state-of-good-repair bridges. It's critical infrastructure and really it is all about maintaining those bridges in a state of good repair. As noted, the construction is well underway. There'd be little point in going back to the community for input on the design, given the fact the design has been used for the contract, construction contract to tender, and that work is well underway.
That, in fact, might lead to confusion and actually with the community, if we, if there was another meeting, also, we'd also have to stop the existing contracts that weren't yet finished, which could add to additional costs. Is that also fair to say?
Through the speaker, that is correct.
And with regard to, there says, it's, there's some sort of notion in the motion about environmental sensitivity. Now, in our discussion, you noted that both the TRCA and Conservation Authority, sorry, the TRCA, the Conservation Authority, has been consulted on this, and there are no environmental issues, are there?
Through the speaker, to your point, on any bridge work that traverses a stream, we involve the Conservation Authority and the Ministry of Natural Resources to seek approvals to do any in-stream works. In the cases of the two bridges that, the one constructed, the one under construction, input from Conservation Authority was sought and final approval granted, as well as Ministry of Natural Resources.
So no issues on the environmental side from your point of view?
Through the speaker, no, not at our end.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions. I'm thinking I'll speak, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson, questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Michael, are you aware that the communication piece from your division that went out to the residents had a mistake in it and actually did not say it was reconstructing or rebuilding the bridge? Instead, it made it sound like they were just fixing the bridge, rehabilitating the bridge. Are you aware of that communication mistake?
Through the speaker, no, I'm not, councillor. I know that in this particular case, the Plimbridge Road Bridge is an outright reconstruction, as was the Donino. The Mill Street Bridge is a rehabilitation, as I understand.
Okay, so if you refer back to your staff's communication piece, I was at an AGM last weekend of this neighborhood where multiple residents stood up and said the communication was incorrect, and apparently your staff admitted that. You're aware that this area is jurisdiction of the TRCA, and there's sensitivities with flooding and also, you know, the huge flood that happened many decades ago that no one will ever forget. But you're aware of that and that the Dawn River runs through this neighborhood that's full of salmon. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I'm aware of, through the speaker, I'm aware of the fishery sensitivities of this water course, the West Dawn River. I'm also aware that, again, going back to the design input from the Conservation Authority, the cross-section of that bridge had to account for the regional storm coniferations, water levels and flows, and that was all incorporated into the design of that bridge reconstruction.
So you're very aware, this residence group, this neighborhood is very engaged because they're very sensitive about environmental issues and the salmon in the Dawn River, et cetera. And so there was been no consultation with the neighborhood on this matter, whereas with your roadwork, there was extensive consultation, CLC set up, et cetera. So there's been no consultation with this neighborhood at all.
Through the speaker, councillor, this is, when it's also undone, it's a state-of-good-repair project. We need to make those bridges safe. Traditionally, we haven't engaged the neighborhood when it is straight outright replacement of the bridge. We do consult with the neighborhoods when there is a material change to the scope of work on our road reconstruction, when there's a change in cross-section. In this particular case, as I noted, it was strictly speaking a state-of-good-repair project to make those bridges safe.
So what we're asking for is a public meeting to talk about what's unfolded, the fact that the notification was incorrect and not clear, and then since before or after, no consultation with the neighborhood that's, you know, overly engaged because the Dawn River flows right through the neighborhood, and that's why you're having to rebuild these bridges. But what I'm simply asking for is consultation, which I'm not sure how anybody can argue against consultation. It's basically the essence of Toronto. So that's what I'm asking for, and so I'm asking staff to consult with the neighborhood. Is that an option?
Through the speaker, I mean, we can undertake a public meeting, but I think to the point raised, I would hate to raise false expectations from the community to suggest that we are materially going to change the design of the bridge. As I noted, we're well under, a bridge that is well under construction at this point. And again, I need to emphasize that safety is paramount. The design of the bridge is in accordance with, you know, current design standards, the Canadian Highway Bridge Design Code and the Ministry of Transportation Structural Manual. So, you know, it's necessary both in terms of vehicle safety, pedestrian safety, as well as cyclist safety.
So the Plimbridge Road Bridge is not under construction, and the Mill Street Bridge has not been designed. And that's as per your staff's communication with my office. And I clearly stated in here that, you know, some of the work is planned or underway, but the bridge has been demolished. But my clear understanding from your staff is it's not to be built till late spring, and the Mill Street Bridge is still in the design stages. Correct?
Through the speaker, the Plimbridge Road Bridge is well under construction. The old bridge, as you pointed out, has been demolished. The prefabricated concrete girders have been installed. The contractor has some additional work to be completed by the end of this year, and then will start up again during the spring to allow for concrete work, finishing work that needs to be completed. But that bridge is well under construction at this point.
Okay, well, that's not my understanding. And the Mill Street Bridge?
Okay, Councillor Rob- Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, through the speaker, the Mill Street Bridge is under design currently with planned construction and completion for next year, 2021.
Thank you. That was your last question. Michael, St. Clair and Scarlett, 20 years.
Yeah, we're working, we're working on that bridge as well, as you know.
Okay, are there any further questions? Okay, to speak, speakers. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I don't know if you recall, I held in the Members' motions three items. I talked to staff on two of them and let them go. I couldn't in all good conscience let this one go because- I couldn't in all good conscience let this one go because it's mine. Sorry.
Counselor Robinson, please allow the Counselor to finish speaking.
And, you know, I know, I mean, I have a responsibility, notwithstanding that this is in a colleague's ward, to look at, you know, something that doesn't make sense to me, and I understand that she wants consultation. But, you know, to use a very bad analogy, that ship has sailed, and we're in construction right now. And I had a very detailed conversation with Mr. Dandrea, who suggested to me that would be an extra cost, and in some ways, very impractical, and to have a community meeting without a sincere effort to say that, you know, whatever the community wants, they can implement, doesn't make sense to me either. In some ways, that's a disservice to the community. So quite frankly, I don't think that we can stop this project. It would be very expensive. The design work is pretty much done. You know, I understand that it's the Don River, but the Don River runs through half of the city, including in my ward. I just, in good conscience, I don't think we should do anything but let the staff continue to do their work. You know, I don't know anything about the miscommunication, and I think that's really unfortunate. But here we are, where we're in mid-construction, and the time for, you know, asking people what their opinion is in terms of fixing these bridges within the context of state-of-good-repair is finished, and I'm worried about the financial costs associated with that. So I would just, you know, urge members of council to leave this one alone, and notwithstanding the efforts of the local counselor to, you know, start a consultation that really can't yield anything. So, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Robinson?
Jay, you're mute, button.
Sorry about that. What I'm asking counsel for, as you see clearly outlined in the motion, is for consultation. So what we've been told by staff is the Mill Street Bridge is in the design phase. What city staff are coming in here with is a cookie-cutter approach. It's a map-truck approach to where you really need a VW bug, for those of you who are car and vehicle lovers, that might be a good analogy. This is a very unique setting. The Don River runs through it. It's really, the jurisdiction of the TRCA is prone to flooding, and it's a very beautifully vegetated area that's, quite frankly, unique in all of Toronto, because it's basically like being in a country setting, you know, in the midst of Toronto. So the residents are very engaged on everything that happens in this neighborhood, whether it's their neighbor, the Rosedale Golf Club, who wanted to do some, you know, not ideal things from the environmental perspective to the Don River, and I don't think they're very big fans of me anymore, that golf club. But bottom line is, we always try to keep the environment in mind, and particularly with Plymouth, there's a salmon run there. We've been exploring a salmon ladder for that bridge. And so it's really unfortunate that there's been this lack of, first of all, misleading information on the communication piece that went to every household, and then no consultation since. When this, you know, when this division knows very well that this neighborhood loves to be involved in what's happening because of the nature of, you know, the basically unique character of this neighborhood. So as I identified, I mean, I guess there's an investigative reporter on this, but I identified clearly in the motion and in the summary that some of this work was underway, and some of it was down the road. But what I'm asking counsel for is consultation with the neighborhood on these issues related to this very unique area. So I'll leave it at that. This is what the neighborhood's asking for. This is what I'm asking for as a local counselor, and I am the local counselor and know the issues intimately, and that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cole?
Yes, I think we can work something out here. I think what Counselor Robinson is trying to say is we need to clarify with the local community exactly what has transpired, what will transpire, and I think that's what she means by consultation, is that, sure, some of the work may have begun and is well underway, but there's no reason that can continue, as there's an opportunity to explain to the residents all the good work that has been done, you know, as mentioned by staff, about the state of good repair and all the safety issues. So I think, working with Counselor Robinson's office, staff can come up with a communication to the community, so they essentially pre-note some of the situation that has already transpired and what the process has been and what it will be, but, and to reassure the community the environmental sustainable approach they've taken, as the city always does, and I'm sure staff has done here. So I think that's what this motion is an attempt, but I'm sure Counselor Robinson will sit down with staff to undertake a proper communication out to the community so they can rest assured that all their concerns have been certainly been given attention. And, you know, and I represent actually 20 feet of the Don River in my writing. I've never seen a salmon there. I've seen a few bags of plastic, but anyways, I just think it is a very precious part of the city, where we've got salmon running up the Humber, salmon running up the Don. So that's why people are very, very sensitive to this, and I think Counselor Robinson has just expressed this sensitivity. And not to underestimate Deputy Mayor Minawong's questions, I think he's very legitimate, but I just think we just should err on the side of giving the counsel an opportunity to have staff communicate with the residents about what has transpired here.
Okay, Counselor Pasternak to speak.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to be supporting Counselor Robinson, the local counselor, on these issues. You know, she isn't asking the sun and the moon. This is really to keep her community informed and engaged on an important infrastructure project that's going up in her area. Look, I don't know all the details of these bridges, and when the design was adopted, and what communication's gone on with the local counselor and with the community. But, you know, one of the big problems of this pandemic is the growing democratic deficit that has occurred, where there's a real challenge in communicating with our local community because we've been, traditionally, we've gone out to public events in gyms and community centers, multipurpose rooms, barbecues, festivals, and we've been able to communicate in a much more in-person environment. And although the WebEx and the Zoom meetings are good, that is what we're left with. And I think it's, and I'm surprised staff are saying there's a, you know, there's a bit of a cost to this. It's, the cost of running events has gone down during the pandemic because they're much easier to organize. True, you have to promote the link and promote the date and time, but basically, the physical organizing of it and staging an event is a lot cheaper than when we were booking rooms in schools or community centers, or booking park space or what have you. So I think this is a very important thing, even if some of the work has already been done, it was hard to tell which bridge is further along. But, you know, we had an event recently with the mayor and chief peg at the Downsview Fire Station, and the work was well underway. Now, it wasn't a community consultation per se, but it was more of a design, design reveal, and we went through with it because it was very important to keep the community informed on progress of the construction, the nature of the final, the final design and product, and it was greatly appreciated that we were still in touch and we were still thinking of them. And I think this is important to support the local counselor, Counselor Robinson, on this initiative. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion?
Recorded vote?
Recorded vote.
Counselor Layton, thank you. Counselor Enslie, please, and thank you. The item carries. The vote is 21 to 1.
Thank you. Our last item is Members' Motion 2738. Mayor Torrey?
Well, Madam Speaker, I indicated in introducing the motion, the purpose of which is to celebrate good, we didn't have half as much celebration as I expected, for example, from the aspiring Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, Counselor Layton, about the fact we got $1 billion or more from the Government of Ontario the other day, and $776 million. I don't have the piece of paper in front of me, but $770 odd million is for transit to address the, of course, the huge revenue shortfall we experienced as a result of the pandemic. And I'm just, I want to say one more time, as I've said, tried to say as many times as I possibly can, how grateful I am for the responsiveness of these two governments. The federal government stepped up and began these discussions with the province. I can tell you, I could give you an in-chapter, chapter and verse description of how the Transit Fund came to be and the size of it, which was enough to accommodate the needs of all the transit systems in the province, but in particular, the very large request that we knew we would be making just based on the size of our transit system. And this simply allows during the time when the council may not be meeting, or the chief financial officer and myself to be authorized to enter into an agreement, which is a requirement that I sign them off on our behalf, to accept the money. And I would sign anything pretty much, as long as I read it carefully, that would allow us to accept this amount of money that we, of course, need to balance our books for 2020. And this amount of money gets us a head start on some of the problems we have for 2021, just given the unusual overlap of the fiscal years. The province is ending on March 31st, ours ending, of course, on December 31st. So I commend this to members. It's really housekeeping, I guess, of a certain order, but it's very, very important housekeeping in terms of our financial, our financial well-being. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Would you like a recorded vote?
I don't need one. I'm not taking time with council if everybody...
Okay. On the mo-
Madam Speaker, I had my name on the list.
No, your name's not here.
Well, it's on my, it's on my list. Request to speak, Robinson.
There it is.
It's just, it just came up now. Okay, Counselor Robinson?
Okay, so I'm just going to take 30 seconds to thank the mayor and the mayor's office, particularly Luke Robertson. But this is really incredible news, and I just think there's a lot of legwork that goes into this that we're not aware of, and I just want to, on behalf of, you know, the whole city, thank the mayor and his staff for their negotiations, their hard work, their dedication, and it's just impressive what's this outcome. So thank you very much to everybody involved.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further speakers? No. Okay, on the motion, on favor, show of hands. Carried. Okay. Okay, members, before I ask for a motion to enact the general bills, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments? Moved by Counselor Bylaw. We'll put it on the screen. Counselor Bylaw, can you read that?
That committee and council consider submissions in making a decision on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments.
Okay, thank you. On favor, carried, may I have a motion to introduce the general bills? Counselor Grimes?
The leave be granted to introduce bills, 1068 to 1130.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills? All those in favor? Carried. Shall these bills be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor? Carried. May I have a motion to introduce a confirming bill? Mayor Torrey?
Move Speaker that leave be granted to introduce the bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of City Council Meeting 27 on December 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2020.
Shall leave be granted to introduce this bill? All those in favor, carried. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? The last vote of 2020, recorded vote.
Well, we're just getting ready to vote, Speaker. Just thank you very much for a really difficult year, going virtual, all you have to learn on the WebEx and everything else. It's really been remarkable. And to all the clerks who have been on this journey with us, and just wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season, as best as we can do. Staying home, I see the mayor, I saw his TikTok today, where he's read all good choices about the holiday season.
Thank you. So here we are.
Here, here.
Our final vote for 2020.
Deputy Mayor Minawong, please. The motion to enact the confirming bylaw carries unanimously 21 in favor, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Speaker?
Yes?
Speaker John here.
Mayor Tor-
I just wanted to say, if I could, first of all, of course, the greetings of the season, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody celebrating different holidays, especially Christmas, which I celebrated, and New Year's. But I also wanted to just say thank you to you, Counselor Fletcher did, but also to say thank you to the council. You know, I continue to be amazed, even though I've been here now for six years, at how well this system can work, and I think the pandemic has really brought about unprecedented cooperation, you know, by the councilors, and we've sort of solved problems behind the scenes so we can come forward to these meetings, as much as they probably still take a little longer than they should, and, you know, fashioned solutions to problems in a kind of collaborative manner. And I think it's really helped the city, notwithstanding the real tragedy that has befallen the city relative to anything else we normally experience. I think we continue to come through this, you know, in a way that I think, you know, would meet the expectations of Trontonians, which is a very high standard and relative to other cities in the world. And we've got to redouble our efforts as we go through the holiday season and the new year, and people do too. But I just want to say thank you to the members of council, because I think, you know, we've worked well in extraordinary circumstances. It's been extraordinary for all of us, and it's been even more extraordinary for the people we serve. So thank you to the councilors, and I hope everybody has a great holiday and follows all public health guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And what is your TikTok for good advice?
Yeah, I've seen the TikTok, too.
Yeah, except that I took the hot chocolate instead of the eggnog. I think the spiked eggnog would be a better, it didn't say spiked eggnog, so I took hot chocolate, but I'll have to reconsider.
I prefer the hot chocolate as well. So I want to, I want to thank members of council, and especially the staff that's here today. Thank you to all the clerk staff for being very supportive, and enjoy the vacation. We'll see you next year. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Everybody, yeah, be safe. Thank you very much. John Francis.